Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on Tuesday, May the twenty eighth. I can't even believe that it is almost June. So we'll officially call this board meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call of our start. My name is Carly Hoover. I'm the Director of District One.
Uh, Secretary of Defense, Secretary of Defense, Superintendent.
Director Charles Proctor, District Three.
Hey, Larson, District Five.
Excuse me, District Four. And my district, sorry.
Charlie Simpson, the true District Three.
Oh, all right. And then I know Director Fuller will be joining us very shortly. Welcome to all of our guests joining us in person and online. As always, I appreciate your willingness to be here, whether you are asked to be or just joining because you care about the business of the district. We're really grateful for everyone being here today. So we'll get us started with our welcome message.
So I can read it for sure to get some there. So our agreements, stay engaged, experience discomfort, be vulnerable, speak your truth, expect and accept non closure. So we need to see this somewhere here. Yeah.
I don't, you don't care what to say.
Thank you. We in the Temple of School District acknowledge that the lands where we teach, collaborate, learn and play the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwanish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, and honor what brought to the land itself and the Duwanish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we strive to work alongside the Duwanish and Muckleshoot people who have been living in here since time in Memorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation, systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, traffics, forced, and undocumented peoples in the buildings of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that yes, historically and currently enforce and create inequities among the people we serve.
Um, now for those who would like, uh, we're gonna sit up and salute, uh, flag.
Hi, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Location mix up.
That's okay.
All right. So we'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings you just in time for your oath of office. While we're, while we're waiting on, um, just a second, if you just joined us, we definitely need you to sign in. Um, so there's a sign in sheet here at the front. Also, if you're here for a quick comment, um, you wanna sign your address. You're ready, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. There's no formal thing, but I'm really like to stand. And then. Oh, sure. All right. Um, I, Kate Fuller, having been duly appointed to the Office of School Board Director.
Duly appointed to the Office of School Director.
Do hereby solemnly, do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of the Tuckaway School District, number four zero six, King County, State of Washington, to the best of my ability.
Best we might say in the past.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Tuckaway School District.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Tuckaway School District.
Number four zero six.
Four zero six.
King County, State of Washington.
King County, State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, your partners.
All right. All right. So I'm very excited to be here at Foster High School. Um, so I'll just pass it to our amazing school team.
Right. Awesome. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I am honored to be here before you and share the goodness that's happening at Foster High School. I'm Latanya Parker, proud principal of Foster. And my team here with me this evening.
I'm Clint Long, Assistant Principal.
And Nasro Konaki, Assistant Principal. All right. And, um, as you can see, we have our, the district strategic plan. And our next slide that we will share will be in alignment with the district strategic plan. So our areas of emphasis for twenty-three, twenty-four school year are inclusive culture of trust, communication, and high expectations. Um, are, one of our other goals is increasing student safety physically, emotionally, mentally, and as far as scholars, the socio-emotional well-being, increasing our partnerships and community collaborations, and improving our ELA and math success rates. Um, we want to focus on creating a culture of belonging, increased safety, and family communication. Giving you just a highlight of what you can expect at Foster High School. We hired recently our wonderful administrative team. So you have Ms. LeJoy, who was our tenant secretary, Ms. Sharika Moore, who was our office manager, and Ms. Crystal Lopez, who was our counseling secretary. Um, all of these three amazing women have just completely helped set the tone for the office. We've had staff, families, and most importantly, our scholars express that they feel more welcomed with coming into the building. Our scholars appreciate and have shared that our, our office staff know their names and know something about them and their families. And so that has just been really awesome just to have that streamlined communication as well as communicating staff who are in the office to communicate with the district any of our needs. This year, actually in last year, one of the things that we've implemented here at Foster is our weekly staff communication, which is our news you can use. The news you can use is designed to provide just clear and concise information to our, to our staff. So in the news you can use that goes out every Monday, and we provide updates on upcoming assessments, staff highlights with all, which also contribute to, you know, positive culture. We highlight any celebrations that are happening, any instructional strategies that departments are trying out or that have worked for other departments in that. Uh, as well as our restorative justice practices that we've been practicing this year. We have our security team who also is trained in restorative practices, who help us in mediations. And they are our point of contact as far as communication on things that they may hear that were happening, like on the weekends or things that are carried across into the school day. And so by having, um, our security team, our office staff, it really has helped with our, as I mentioned, response time and just reducing incidents that could potentially be bigger.
And then our, I get the pleasure to start talking about how we're increasing student safety, both physical, emotional, and mental wellbeing. First, we're gonna be talking about our social worker, Mrs. Sanchez. She provides social, emotional supports for scholars and connects our families from Angola and South America with mental health resources such as sound mental health. The social worker also assists with medical appointments and connecting refugee families with community resources. Uh, this critical position has been key, has been key to supporting our students and community. Our, um, Behavior Health Assistant, uh, who's a, a person that's, uh, that's been brought into our school from the Puget Sound E S D. She had been instrumental also in supporting our council, our counseling department by helping support students overcome trauma, mental, also providing mental support, academic, uh, uh, support as well as, uh, she is one of our E W S, our early warning indicators, uh, members. Facilitates academic and, uh, social, emotional learning groups after school. And, uh, is also kind of our help, uh, sorry, our, uh, she has some, some fun groups that she runs after school as well with, uh, uh, she's got a group learning about cosmetology, uh, doing hair and nails. And that's, that's been really exciting for some of our students. Uh, security, uh, as it's already been mentioned, focusing on relationships and engaging students as well as the physical safety that they provide, uh, in our school, uh, getting to know all of our students at a personal level, um, so that they know them by sight, uh, and and have form positive, positive relationships so that if there's anytime that de-escalation needs to occur, uh, we can leverage, leverage that, that knowledge of already knowing the person. Also, we have the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, uh, increasing student safety in the hallways, encourage attendance, uh, runs our after-school enrichment programs, uh, spools, both secondary pathways, facilitates many educational experiences that our students enjoyed. Everything from March Madness after-school kind of thing that we did in March, uh, way to include our H B C U trip, uh, where took a lot of our students on a trip to, to our, to colleges all over the country. Um, we have been very intentional, very intentional about including them in school-wide, or sorry, including, uh, our students in school-wide decision-making process, including their input. The cell phone policy, we also have a listening session, uh, for the budget and, uh, listening to their concerns about class sizes being impacted from their, you know, from the, the reactions we've had to have towards the nation.
I'm very excited. Uh, this year we, um, held an arena-style, uh, family conference. So in the fall, we had student-led conferences, um, and then after meeting with our leadership team and thinking about the best possible way to engage families and bring them back into the building, we voted to, um, hold arena-style conferences and, um, very just excited to announce that we had over two hundred and sixty families will attend that event. Um, and reported by, you know, many, uh, staff who've been here for a very long time that they've never seen those numbers here at Foster, uh, but most importantly, families were here, they were engaged. Uh, we partnered with our family liaisons. Um, one of the things I, I just feel like we need more support with translation because there were so many families, um, here uh, with our, with our teachers and staff and, and other support staff in the building. It was just an incredible event. The, one of the goals for this year was also to hold a listening session for our families. As I mentioned, our, one of our areas of emphasis is community and family partnerships. And so it was really important for us to, um, welcome families back into the building and honor them, you know, as their, their scholar's first teacher. And so, uh, most recently, we held a, a family listening session here at Foster where we had families come out and, uh, family liaisons were here as well. We broke into small groups and we, um, just engaged in authentic conversations with families to have them share what are some of the highlights, um, that they've appreciated about Foster? And then what are areas academically, socially, around safety, um, that they would like to see for their children here, um, during their time at Foster? And so, um, with that information that the family shared, it's being shared back out to, um, our staff around the feedback. And then we'll use that information, um, as a focus for, um, upcoming school years. We also this year through our GEAR Up U-Dub partnership, held, uh, parent academies. Those have happened twice a month to support our families, um, in partnership with our, uh, college and career to focus on like financial aid completion, um, college preparedness and readiness, um, and just walk families through the process needed for their scholars to access their next steps in their post-secondary, um, educational journey. Our theme fair is tomorrow, and you all are all invited. Um, and it's just a great opportunity to come and see the um, programs that are offered, um, here at Foster. You'll also be able to hear from scholars around their experiences, um, in their classes and you, uh, student, uh, work. So that's tomorrow from four to six. And then.
And you, can you just, as you said, the, the family engagement, there was a lot of info you gathered. And you highlighted a few of the, you know, what they liked.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, one of the things that families said that, that they appreciated this year was having a platform to come. Um, that was really one of the, uh, the, um, that was one of the pivotal questions that I wanted to know is like, is this something, the way that you'd like to communicate with us? And so, yes, they expressed yes. So I would say the communication that they've received from, um, from administrators as well as, um, the, um, arena-style conferences, they appreciated that. Um, another thing that they highlighted as an area of growth or concern, um, for our staff, and this will be communicated back to them, is just, um, consistent communication from teachers. And, uh, what else did they share?
There was a mention of, uh, um, around attendance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Attendance, yes. Attendance, um, continues to be an issue. Um, the, there's been discrepancies with attendance, uh, reporting. And, um, one of the, uh, families also just reported that they would like to hear about attendance, not just from the local calls or the cyber system, but from teachers as well.
Okay, so communication back to them on kind of what's going on with their students academically, attendance, all those things.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know that safety has been a kind of a, a big thing on the hearts and minds of the scholars. Did that come up a lot in the, in the care of visiting sessions as well?
Actually, um, it did come up. Um, one of the things that families reported during that listening session, as Mr. Long mentioned, um, we've really been intentional about trying to include scholar voice into our decision-makings just around safety. Um, and so it did come up. The way that it was brought up was in a positive light around the things that we are doing around safety.
So, um, as you can see, we have, um, a lot of partnerships, um, with our community, um, partners, and I'm just going to highlight, highlight a few. Mr. Long mentioned about Urban League, and I'm going to talk about our partnership with, um, Delta Dental. So, um, we partnered with, partnered with Delta Dental to provide dental learning labs for scholars in science and family health classes. And scholars learned how to, um, it was a very hands-on. No, no, sorry. Um, it was a very hands-on, um, experience for our scholars. And they learned to fill cavities and learned about dental hygiene. And, um, we are very excited to, um, to mention that Delta Dental is paying for dental assistant, assistant licenses for sixty-five of our scholars who can start employment this summer, um, with a starting pay of twenty-five to twenty-eight dollars. So very excited about the outcome of, of our partnership with Delta Dental.
Is the question, you have so sixty-five scholars or those ones that show an interest? And then, or is that just they have spots for sixty-five scholars?
Those sixty-five are scholars who participated in the dental labs.
Okay.
Um, and there are more applications. So this is going to be an ongoing partnership. So really excited about that, too.
But this is like a, a paid internship program?
Good. So they will have, um, they will receive their dental, uh, assistant licenses.
Okay.
Um, which is gonna be, uh, paid for by Delta Dental. And then they will be able to go into either paid internship this summer or, um, depending on their age, uh, seek employment.
Okay.
Um, the other partnership I want to quickly mention is, um, this year we've collaborated with the long partners to, um, to provide, um, staff PD. And the focus was on, um, the PD was, um, called, um, reimagining, um, reimagining our, um, connections with scholars. So reimagining the way we redirect scholars in the classrooms and the hallways and kind of like putting a restorative justice, um, perspective, um, on, on the way staff and administrators connect, um, and, and work, work with our scholars. Think that's involved.
Lots of community partnerships, um, some of the factors that are contributing to our, uh, ELA and math success rates. Um, in ninth grade, we have weekly math lessons and advisories that are explicitly taught by our math teachers. Um, our Algebra One classes have our M L, uh, coaches, M L L coaches and E S P supports embedded in those classrooms. We also have our M L L, and this is just as of this year. Um, our M L L after-school tutoring program where scholars can go and get extra, um, academic support. And this is outside of our, uh, extended after-school program that is also offered for all scholars. Um, and the after-school program, there's a focus, um, there, uh, on algebra and geometry after-school tutor.
Sounds like that.
All right. Next one. Right. So, um, looking at, uh, the Washington State of Improvement Framework, uh, just a few things that I wanted to highlight here are, um, that our dual credit score for Black or African-American and low-income, um, scholars, uh, the scores are a seven out of ten and as well as for, um, two or more mixed races. Also a seven out of ten. Our, uh, Hispanic, Latino, and other Pacific Islander score is a six. And our graduation combined score for two or more races is, um, a seven. And looking at, um, the data.
Just so people know that.
Oh.
Out of ten.
Yes, out of ten, out of ten. Um, looking at our, um, data for our Hispanic and Latino scholars, um, it's a four. And currently, we're working on ways to engage, um, our Hispanic Latino community. Um, one of the things that we've added this year is our Heritage History Class. And so that's a world, um, history class that is taught in Spanish. And, um, we also believe, and as I mentioned, like, these are things that we're working on in trying to also gather the voices of the community, um, to see what are some of the, um, experiences or needs that will contribute to engagement. Attendance continues to be a concern. Um, we're working to improve our attendance through uh, reviewing our, our current processes for out-of-district transfers, reviewing our data through our weekly M T S F and CARE teams. Um, and we are working with our on-time graduation specialists and our counselors, as well as our administrators, to hold, um, meetings with families. So we're asking them to come into the building or we're doing that, um, through hybrid model to have conferences around attendance and figure out like what the needs and supports are that scholars and families have to address the attendance, um, concerns. And I also just want to add that we have, um, with our partnerships that are in the building, we also have established check-in connects. Um, that's with the Urban League with your, uh, our, uh, Behavior Health Assistant. Um, so we have touchpoints for scholars and with the hope of increasing and improving our attendance um, going into the next school year.
I'm curious, are they getting any, what kind of feedback are you getting from people who are why the attendance? First of all, I should say, I looked around, actually, at some of the high schools in our area. Actually, Foster is doing a lot better than, like, Highline High School, the Renton High School. So, uh, congratulations. I mean, obviously, you mentioned a bunch of things that you're doing that seem to be working, but, and, and of course, this attendance, this is a nationwide issue. Is it not against us? It's, it's all over the place and particularly Christwell. But I'm just curious, are you getting any insights into what's, you know, why? I mean, there's a lot, been a lot of speculation, you know, particularly the impact of COVID, you know, first of all, you know, to some of the, there's gonna be attendance down because people are less likely to come to school because they're sick, which is a good thing. That's a part of it. But then there's, there's, I've been reading, there's a big article in the New York Times recently about, you know, the next kind of level is, is, um, uh, mental health issues and students kind of, you know, having been pulled out of school for a couple, now they're kind of having to adjust back. And I'm just curious what your experiences.
Yeah, that's a really great question. And I can tell you, um, just with, um, being in communication with our counselors and our social worker, um, mental health and, um, our scholars who are facing mental health challenges and having crises has, it's increased over the last couple of years post-pandemic. And, um, I believe that that's most likely across the board. Um, one of the other things that we've noticed is a lot of the attendance issues that we're also having here um, have to do with, uh, scholars who are here out of district. And so we're looking at those current, um, processes and policies and meeting with, um, families to figure out like, are we, you know, effectively serving scholars if they can't get to school on time and their homeschool is, you know, Renton or, or, you know, Tacoma somewhere, something like that, if they're not, you know, M K B. So, um, yes, I would agree, um, just based on the information that I have, that it had something to do with it. And then, you know, it's, I think it's just hard for some scholars who have been at home for years coming back into school. So, um, we're gonna continue to, um, work with our teams and figure out and, and hear from our scholars on like, what do you need to get you here to school on time?
Yeah, that's really interesting. I sense is that sometimes need to attract students back in and, and when we talk about whether like theater programs and, you know, more things that pull students in is a good part of it. But, yeah, I'd love to hear whenever you guys, um, have a listening session for students who are there, what they're saying about it, if their view is still.
Make sure to share that.
Yeah.
Is there any correlation that you've seen where maybe like, you know, uh, scholars that were of an incoming freshman, uh, when we were virtual for COVID, missing more school now? Or is there, is that completely unrelated?
Um, I don't, I would have to look it up. I do.
One of the thing, one of the reasons I've learned, sitting in with conferences, sitting in conferences with parents and, and our junior and senior scholars is the, them trying to balance their school and work schedule.
Yeah, it sounds like, yes, yeah, right. Yeah, it sounds like, yes, yeah, right.
They have to work, um, because they might be an unaccompanied minor and they don't have family.
Right.
To rely on financially.
Right.
Um, so just balancing that school and work schedule.
And that's an interesting challenge, right? Because it can get back to, do we have the right bell schedule for high school? Maybe, I mean, I, there's a whole set of complicated issues that roll out of that, but yeah. That's good to know.
Right, um, so this next slide, um, I want to share that, uh, we are, uh, closing the gap um, as it relates to our, um, our homeless or unhoused and our scholars with disabilities. And as you can see, um, there was a, there was a dip, um, you know, which looks like it was during the pandemic, uh, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. Um, and then most recently here, um, that gap looks like it has closed as far as graduation rates. Um, they have increased, um, which, you know, we attribute to our, um, work with our McKinney Vento liaison, as well as, um, the focus being on our social emotional learning. Um, and helping scholars navigate, um, the mental health challenges through the supports and community partners that we have. Um, as we've shared, our, uh, Behavior Health Assistant was hired in twenty-twenty-one. And our, um, social worker who is just, uh, gosh, she's phenomenal. And she was hired last year. Um, we also have our, uh, inclusion model and our special education department, which has provided accessibility for scholars in general education classrooms. Um, and with our staff, kids managers and ESPs intentionally focusing on, um, transition support and tran- transition audits to ensure that, um, our scholars for this from educational justice, um, graduate from high school. So lots of next steps. Lot of the next step. Um, but I do want to highlight that currently our seniors on track to graduate in just a couple of weeks here is at eighty-nine percent. And that's including, um, uh, that's not including our unconfirmed transfers. That rate, um, can go up once, uh, we get confirmation on, um, scholars who have transferred out. Um, it's more than likely that that number will go up. Um, our ninth graders who, uh, passed, uh, first semester, um, and are on track is sixty-three percent. And we plan to continue our race and equity work and anti-racism work through professional development. As well as partnering with and reorganizing, we need to restructure our race and equity team here at the building. We've had staff who have left. And so that is one of our goals is to restructure, um, that team. And we will be meeting, um, this summer with department, um, department leads to, um, hold a half-day, uh, retreat, um, looking at our, um, equitable, um, grading practices and alignment in grading practices, which will then hopefully lead to, you know, increased engagement, um, instruction and, and outcomes for our scholars. Um, let's see, what else do we have here? Continue to strengthen our family engagement and partnerships through parent advisories. We will continue our listening sessions and, um, hopefully get back to you soon on some of the questions that you have. And, um, continue our work, um, with our MLL and, uh, inclusionary model. Uh, increasing student engagement as well as, um, continuing to partner and provide um, post-secondary opportunities for all of our scholars.
What you mentioned ninth grade, um, we, we also, um, uh, are going to introduce, um, ninth grade bonus classes for students so they have access to, access to, um, accessibility to, um, rigorous instructions and they can see themselves as successful respondents.
And it's gonna be, uh, there's always the question of is it an opt-in or an opt-out? I mean, are they, years ago, this is, you know, if, if you had the, um, courses, of course, in ninth grade, but if you had the course, you would kind of be opted into that and then you have to opt out or is it, which way are you doing it?
Yeah, so our leadership team and our, um, English department are, um, working to, we're still working on that. Um, but, um, as of right now, it currently is going to be scholars are in ninth grade honors and, and all scholars will access the rigorous academic instruction with our supports. So, um, we believe that we really can put our scholars on a trajectory to access more rigorous classes. And if they feel like they're able to be successful with coming into foster and having those high expectations, um, that we believe that they are, they're all capable.
The other thing I, I was interested, um, because that, and I guess this is probably more occurred us a little bit, but we got some, we, we see, we looked at data, discipline data and we saw at a district-wide level, there was disproportionate, um, discipline for Black students. And, and you said, but when you looked at the foster data, that wasn't the case, which is really always interesting to me. What it says to me, for example, is that we need to be seeing this on a building level because, and I, I think I had the same question came up, you know, were more incidents happening on, um, substitute teachers? And you said at Foster that wasn't happening, whereas such a lot they said it was. So anyway, that's just a, I guess, a, uh, information for the board to kind of make, we have to be careful about. Each building can be, have different things going on and, and so we can't just assume everything's the same at every building. So, um, and it was, it was interesting, you mentioned a couple of them out of district students and that whole process is, is interesting to me. So are we finding that, um, I mean, obviously we want more students to come for more money. But on the other hand, if they're, um, if they're coming with a lot of issues, then is the question, do we need to not let them in or do we, there is the question, you know, do we need to figure out what their support system is needed in there? Yeah, I don't know. It's probably maybe some of both, I'm guessing.
Yeah, there's a, if you look at the granular level
Yeah.
of that data, um, there's a combination, so on how did district student and how they became out of, then how did district student, if they were already here and came up through Showalter and then the family moved away. Um, but they still wanted to go here because this is where they feel comfortable.
Yeah, sure.
Right, so they're considered out of district as well as people that are coming in from outside, uh, to district.
Yeah.
Back into the district, left for whatever reason it could be, they moved far away. Now they're a little bit closer, things went bad at the old schools.
Yeah.
They're coming to this school.
Or how much is like Taiyi, you know, Taiyi, when they get rebuilt, there's a bunch, I don't know how many people that is, but.
Yeah. But, uh, just looking at that discipline data and the stuff that happened, um, I'm thinking of one, you know, group of students where it seemed like a couple of them made decisions that they were coming here, which brought that whole group. They all knew each other from before.
Yeah.
Um, but they all came to our school and, uh, and there were struggles. I mean, we, we tried to engage on multiple levels, but, and, uh, for that particular group, they ended up, uh, being asked to go back to their homeschool.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so it's, yeah, it's complicated issue, I guess.
Yeah.
Favorite general statements, but, yeah, that's, that's an interesting phenomenon.
Oh, two questions. Uh, one, if there's, if you can go back and start this year over again, is there anything you would have changed? And two, what did you do this year that you're most, uh, proud of in terms of achievements?
Yeah, they're really great questions. Thank you. Um, if I can go back and start the year over, I would start with the staffing. That was an issue, um, starting the year, uh, out with classroom sizes that were large. Um, and that's, that was just due to increased enrollment, you know, for this school year. So that would be one. And then, um, one of the things that I'm most proud of coming into Foster, you know, I can proudly say that it feels, um, like the, uh, culture and climate within the building has shifted. Um, you know, we really working hard to build trust and rapport with our families and with our staff. Um, which then leads to the outcomes that we're hoping to get, right? And that's keeping our scholars at the center of everything that we do. Um, so I'm extremely proud of that. I'm also proud of, um, just our families who are coming into the building and actually feeling comfortable with sharing, you know, some of their successes and then their challenges as well. So. Huge number, over two hundred people, don't do it a bit.
I just want to commend you and your team, um, what you spoke through at the very beginning when you were, um, acknowledging the, your office team around, you know, belonging and inclusion is not just big actions, right? It's actually the, the stringing together of small subtle actions on a daily basis, right? Knowing scholars by their name, um, greeting them in that way and also knowing something a little bit more, right? Showing that, um, in that real genuine interest, um, really including their voice, right? Those are the, the little things that are hard but not, right? That really create that sense of belonging and connection. Um, so I just want to commend you on those, those small things that are clearly giving you a significant difference. And how young people feel, how the staff feel, um, and then how the families feel as well. So thank you. Any additional questions?
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, yes, yes, they ground them down. Um, all right, so that brings us to our public comment, uh, portion of tonight's agenda. Um, and I know a few folks join, uh, late, so if you haven't yet signed in, please do that. Um, and then definitely if you'd like to provide public comment, um, we'll need you to sign in for that as well. Um, so I'll snag that list from you, I've got one, uh, written public comment that I'll go ahead and read first. Looks like we've got one in person. All right, uh, good evening, Dr. Pedrosa and school board members. I apologize for not being here this evening, but I had a previous engagement with my family that I could not miss. My name is Kathy Turner and I want to make sure that you all understand what my position does and advocate for it to be funded next year. My position as the state and school coordinator is for the entire school district, not just one or two schools. Since two thousand eighteen, our regular attendance rate has gone from eighty-two percent to sixty-four percent, students who miss fewer than two days per month. This is a national trend since the pandemic and districts across the country are working tirelessly at re-engagement. Attendance intruency in public schools are regulated in Washington State statute, chapter two-eight-A dot two-two-five, RCW and the Washington Administrative Code, uh, chapter three-nine-two-four-zero-one, uh, WAC. School districts must report absences, intruency data to OSPI through the Comprehensive Education Data and Research System, NMSIERS. Um, also, school districts must disengage, sorry, designate, a very different word. Wow, school district must report absence and intruency data to OSPI through the Comprehensive Education Data and Research System. Also, school districts must designate and identify a person to coordinate school district efforts to address excessive absenteeism and truancy to the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction and to the local juvenile court for RCW two-two-eight-A dot two-two-five dot zero-two-six. I've included this information for you all to look at. Currently in our district, I do all of it. I run attendance reports two times per month for all schools. Schedule and attend monthly attendance meetings at the elementary level. Attend EWIS MTSS meetings two times a month at the secondary level. Attend monthly King County BECCA meetings and monthly state OSPI attendance and truency meetings. I reach out to families to meet with them to discuss the barriers to school attendance. I meet with students and discuss goals, complete attendance agreements and check in with students daily. I build relationships with students and families. I file all truency petitions with the court and start the court intervention process. This process is specific and has timelines and includes administering, uh, warrants assessment, workshops, CEVs, pre-trial conferences, status conferences, preliminary hearings, review hearings, progress reports, contempt hearings, purge reviews and finally dismissals. I also make referrals to community partners for alter- alternative educational options, counseling and meet with juvenile probation counselors for our students. I also work on our twenty-day, uh, drop process in tracking down students to either confirm enrollment status, get them to re-engage at school and provide them with supports they may need. Eliminating this position concerns me. Who is going to do this work? With our attendance rate at sixty-four percent, uh, re-engagement should be a priority. Getting students back in the classroom benefits everyone who is knowledgeable in the court system. Who knows how to file a petition and make sure that we are following the statute? Who knows the rules of court proceedings, declarations of service, filing motions, et cetera? Currently, we have forty active petitions with hearings scheduled in September and October. Has there been any discussion as to who is going to take the lead on this and attend hearings or file reports with the court? I'm assuming that that has not been discussed as I have not been asked to help train anyone. To justice, my position can be eliminated and that it will be absorbed by the buildings is not realistic. This work is very specific and time-sensitive. I hope that you all will reconsider this position in the district as this work is required by OSPI. Thank you, Kathy Turner, state and school coordinator. And then for the board members, I'll let you get a copy of this, there's integration on the wax that she referenced. RCW's. Um, all right, um, I forgot to mention too, if you are joining us online, I would like to offer public comment. If you're sort of erasing your hand, um, or typing your name into the chat. Um, so we have one in-person, uh, public comment here this evening, Jennifer Pichamba.
Um, good evening, Dr. Pedrosa and school board. I'm Jennifer Pichamba, the College and Career Writing Specialist here at Foster High School. In fact, behind that door over there is the College and Career Center. I want to share with you what the College and Career Center is all about and what I do to support students. Let me share a story about one of my tenth graders, Alan. He started coming by the College and Career Center midway through ninth grade. He was not on track at all. I became a person he trusted. You should know, he loves soccer. He continued to struggle and was not able to play on Foster Soccer Team in ninth grade. He and I talked a lot about how important doing well in his classes will help him be a part of the team and be on the soccer pitch. Flash forward to tenth grade. Alan came in at the start of the year and asked me to find her to keep track of all of his classes. As he says, he began to cook in class. He had a great soccer season. In fact, he was second team all-league, actually. Well, I'm sorry, poor English. Um, I went to as many games as possible to cheer him and the rest of his team on. Next year, he is joining Abbott and is excelling in tenth grade. This is because of the relationship we built and because there is space for students to come and be supported. Alan is not the only young person. There are many. I could share tons of stories with you. Additionally, I want to share about what happens in the College and Career Center daily. It is a space that is full of students. The start of the school year, our seniors are busy completing college applications. I edit an average of five personal set, personal essays a day. I talk to kids more than I talk to adults, I'm a little nervous. Um, eleventh and twelfth grade running start students spend lots of their time before classes they have at FHS and sports in the College and Career Center. I have a core group of tenth graders that check in daily. Many students choose to spend lunch as well in the College and Career Center. Again, relationships are built in the College and Career Center. Financial aid season comes briefly and students and families come to get support to complete either FASFA or WASFA. In fact, I hosted three financial aid nights this year and February was fall in love with financial aid where we devoted most of, most Wednesdays to help families with financial aid. Um, I also consistently assist families and contacting federal student aid when issues arise. And there was a lot of issues this year. Even today, I worked with a family to call federal student aid. I support students as they apply for scholarships. I work with Director Larson to provide district scholarships to our seniors. Additionally, I partner with various CBOs like UW-STEMSA, Minds Matter and the Rotary Club and much, much more. I work with them to connect our students to the opportunities that they provide and there's many. What makes the College and Career Center special is the relationships that are built. The students feel welcome and supported from me and from each other. Lots of fresh friendships have loomed. It is a special place for our students and without a College and Career Center, that will not happen anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I think one of the things I would just ask, um, Dr. Pedrosa, so there's, you know, both of these public comments related to two things that I think are very important to us as a district, right? Success of, um, post-college or post-secondary education, um, as well as attendance, as we talked about. So I think if we could just get some insight from you, not today, um, but in, in the future about kind of what your plan is. Thank you. All right, just to confirm, there's no online public comments, not seeing any. Um, great, just as a reminder, there's an opportunity always at the end for additional public comment. We have one more. Okay. Huh, two more? Okay. Could you sign real quick here? And then that way.
Nice.
And if you just.
I'm Andy Rotis Mendoza, and I can stop bombs for Chum, Mr. Chamba, obviously, if I could. I'll speak about how great of a person she is, but that's not mostly supporting thing right now. Mr. Chamba helped me a lot. I came from like zero point oh to, I don't even know right now, but it's great. And then she held me there. Uh, her room builds communities, like obviously we're in high school, there's going to be like popularity hierarchies, right? And that kind of debunked that myth, like in her room, it's just very, very warm, I could express it. And it builds a lot of character in people that we didn't know was in there. For example, like my friend Alan and me, last year we were doing horrible, we were doing bad stuff, I'm not gonna lie to you. But yeah, now this year, like I've seen a side of him that I've never seen because of this room. It really helps us and as well, I've heard from a lot of students that, Foster just isn't academically hard enough for them. And then Mr. Chamba brings in students that from the University of Washington that help with that, you know, just friendly debates and this and that, it really helps, you know? And they tell you about these great plugs and it's just a great resource. And as well as, she's always mentally there with the students. When a student has a problem, she could be a counselor, she could be a mother, she could be all these things, which is great. And in this little room, I think she makes a big impact, honestly. I feel like the College and Career Center is a piece of the heart of Foster, honestly. Students come and go, but they always have a great time and I think that's very important. And, uh, yeah, she's just, I describe her as a word is great.
Um, Alan, there I say, uh, I don't know why Mr. Chamba mentioned that their seats, but they have, uh, you know, coming in, uh, two years ago as a freshman, I was like, and yeah, the freshman coming from middle school, you know, lost in high school. I know my way around school, getting lost, going on good advice. And then I think that was a big role on why I wasn't succeeding. I thought that coming into high school, I had to like, it ain't try to be cool with everyone around me and realizing towards the end of the year, how I had to sit out because of due to my grades. Just, it didn't make me look forward, it made me look everything but cool, you know, being on the soccer team, having the life of the, my, like, the lowest GPA in soccer team, it is, didn't look good on me. And then going to that, I, I don't want to hurt myself, but I hurt the whole team by not just being there. I don't want to stop talking, no, but I like, it's, it's, it's like, we're gonna need like everyone and then next, sort of this year, at the end, towards the end, Mr. Chamba, like maybe you'd be like a lot of stuff like that. Yeah, you can like kid around some here and there in school, but once you go in your classroom, you just have to pay attention, you know? And then that's what started the year, I, things really just changed because I realized that I gotta do good for myself and get good grades and have a better future going off to college and, you know, not only for me, but for my family, you know? Since coming from like, just seeing my brother last year graduate and then hopefully being the next two years I graduate as well. So I just want to like help them be proud of me and then help Mr. Chamba be proud of me because she helped me a lot and then me not reaching my goals and then, oh, like all at home, send a boat away, stay by home, succeed, so. She just helped me realize a lot and I wouldn't be doing as well as I'm doing right now as it was in progress.
Wait, in that time, it looks like we have, uh, uh, somebody doing virtually who would like to offer public comment. Um, so Demi, um, in just a moment, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you could, please state your full name, uh, for the record, please. Should be able to unmute now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name's Molly Demming and I'm a literacy interventionist at Tuckola Elementary. And I guess mine's kind of more of a question, but, um, this last week I received an email saying that because of funding, um, my, my position was being, um, cut. So I guess my question is, the district is claiming to, you know, not want to make cuts or wants to make cuts that are furthest away from our students. However, as the weeks have gone on, it seems like the majority of our cuts at the elementary level anyway have been to staff who work directly with our students. And, um, now I guess is the district able to explain their reasoning? Especially when as interventionists, we were funded through LAP and Title. And to my knowledge, that funding is not changing. Um, so I think that's my biggest question and, um, yeah.
Thank you, Molly, uh, for your question. Um, and we will have Dr. Pedroza follow up with you, um, regarding that question. Some of it may be potentially answered a little bit as we're moving through some of our other discussion today. Um, but, um, we'll definitely make sure that Dr. Pedroza close up with that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so moving on from the public comment portion of tonight's agenda, uh, we'll move now to our reports. Looks like, um, we do not have a student representative here today unless one of them are joining online. All right, so then.
Full comment though, I, I would be remorse if I didn't at least say that it's, it shows very good character of, um, these two young men coming out here and speaking for their teacher today and I am very, very impressed with what it is and also the work that you've done um, with these, with these young men here and I'm sure many other people that were that have come through, um, here at this place and first thing, I spend our evenings here, so I super appreciate you guys doing that. And everything you heard and said has been well, well heard for sure, so thank you.
Great, and that's my question, Mr. Chamba. Sure, um, good evening, uh, to all the staff, students and community. Um, we're at the end of May, um, as we're all aware, we've had lots of, lots of activities for the month of May. Um, some of them have been really, really challenging, um, and some of them have been, um, also just part of the uh, fabric of, uh, Tuckola School District and flexibility, adaptive, resourceful and many, many um, of the, uh, words that I think of, like I think of this district. Um, I also want to just take a moment, uh, we had an all-staff celebration. Um, we had some retirees that came in after the fact, so I want to make sure that we honor all the retirees um, from the district, some of them are going to read their names, um, Tamara McCarthy, uh, Diane Inez Hood, uh, Melissa Tatum, Cynthia Cruz, Adiselle Montufar and then Jody Wicks. So I want to congratulate all of them for the, even the dedication to the hood. Um, through the Tuckola School District. Um, I got a really nice letter from Ms. Wicks thanking us for the event and so I'll share that with the board. So I thought that was a really nice, uh, email she sent us regarding the celebration. Um, just to share regarding our research equity work, uh, our last month with Dr. Rogersard and Dr. Canaus is coming up in June, uh, so there'll be equity leads and principals together and the team. Uh, and then we'll be doing some, uh, transition work, uh, from the district. Um, I have a couple other updates. Uh, first, I want to congratulate Julie Hurt, who was announced as Putead Sound ESD Classified Employee of the Year. Newly part of the McKinney Vento team, uh, who works alongside Mary Ann Abdo and they have been a force this year in working with our families, uh, with unstable housing. Uh, their workload has doubled this year and they work tirelessly in supporting, um, the families of Riverton, but also the families in our schools, hotels, coordinating with our local districts, um, to support any and all transitions. So, um, we just want to honor them. I also want to congratulate the class of Tim Rents, who were acknowledged in a pre-print scientific journal paper. Um, and so we're working on a feature on that, so congratulations to class and Mr. Rents. I also want to congratulate Clint Long. He has been offered a high school principal's position at Franklin Peer School District and we are wishing him the best in his professional journey. Thank you. That's a good stuff. Um, we have, um, Alex in here, but Alex did a fantastic job helping our first in-person student advisory meeting. Oh my God, Alex was amazing, just, and one of the students walked out, but this was such a great meeting. It was, it was a great, their three topics that they focused on were safety, rigorous instruction and anti-racism. Those are the three main topics and they're actually defining and bringing a definition for anti-racists from the student perspective for the district. So that's one of their assignments they're working on right now, that they want to send the board to consider. Um, I participated at Foster High School Listening Session, thank you team, you guys did an amazing job, um, supporting families and really listening to all the various engagements that families have. I did hear you're planning quarterly ones for next year, so, um, and it was great to get all the feedback. And then just the high school graduation, everyone is set for Friday, June seventh at six PM at the Showware Center. So we're all getting ready and excited for celebrating our seniors. And then finally, I just want to express gratitude to Dr. Allison Dino. Uh, this will be her last board meeting at Tuckola School District and we want to thank her for all she's done for the district, uh, with the dual language program, heritage language, all the work you've done with our, our MLL students um, for the past two years, we thank you very much. Uh, she will do great things in St. Louis Public Schools as the Chief of School and Services. That's all I have, that's a lot.
Any follow-up questions? All right, um, so now we move to board reports, um, okay, starting this one.
Okay, so I'll start with, um, ended the student listening session for Foster High School, there was a couple of, um, things that we've heard before and I'll talk a little bit about them too, was, uh, the theater, um, group and then the College and Career Center, which we heard a lot of testimony on that. But kind of start with the, um, uh, the theater group, so they just, uh, finished up their production of, uh, the Lightning theme that went to see. And it was the first time, I mean, I've been following that program for many years and it was the first time they did a, a full-blown musical, which is actually quite a challenge to do that. I mean, it's not easy, um, to particularly, they're coordinating, you know, singing with, with live orchestra and, um, it was, you know, it was, you know, doing something that I think great teachers do and that is push the students to their limits and it definitely pushed them to their limits. They did a really great job, there's some great sets, great lighting, you know, a lot of really good aspects to it. And, um, I think, uh, we heard several, um, you know, testimony from students about what that program means to them. That program has a long history at this high, at this high school, um, going back many, many years. And, um, you know, sometimes, um, tradition is, needs to be changed, but in this case, no, this is, this is a tradition that needs to continue, uh, for sure. Um, and I counted on the thing, there's like thirty-three students that were involved in this production, you know, either onstage or behind the scenes and, you know, they all, they all did a great job. And I, you know, when I'm thinking about, you know, their, their proposal is to eliminate that position. However, I think we need to really think very seriously about how to, uh, keep that position. Um, and I think, you know, there's, there's a variety of, um, you know, tech, you know, our notice in our, and let's probably talk about this more when we get to the budget step, but because of the increase in student counts, we're, we're, we're getting increased revenue, which, um, I know we need to, you know, it's, it's going to be a balance of how much of that revenue do you use to get out, out of our deficit position quicker, but supporting students is really, really important. And this, you know, when we're talking about mental health issues and things like that, this, these are the kinds of programs that absolutely engage students. I mean, these are the kids that come out after school and stay and work hard and, and develop the relationships between, not only between the students, but between the students and the adults. And so these are the kind of programs that we just, we just, we really need to, we cannot, we need to figure out some way to do that, whether it's, you know, finding some other budgets or whether it's, um, you know, community fundraising or whether it's, I was looking, you know, there's been some big, uh, efforts, uh, King County Council to, um, preserve arts in schools. Um, there's an organization called Four Culture in King County, which funds things like that. There's Open Doors, which another King County project to fund school, you know, among other things. And, you know, it's, it's, it's really a tragedy when, you know, it's like almost automatic. It seems like the schools are looking in tight, but Jerry, they always start whacking the yards. It's just, just drives me nuts because, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we need to, uh, really keep. So anyway, um, great job for all the students for, uh, for their production and we need to really, really work hard to figure out how to, how to keep that program. The other one that's come up is, uh, I bet is the College and Career Counselor. And I wanted to do a little bit of history about this. Um, so back in about thirteen fourteen, this high school had a graduation rate of fifty-five percent. And it was a time when, you know, the districts in South King County were working together in a project called Roadmap Project, Race to the Top. And we got a bunch of money from the federal government, uh, all the districts in South King County. And at the time Foster High School used a lot of, there's a lot of emphasis in the program, uh, college and is the ultimate goal of that, that project was to get more students, uh, with either diploma or some graduation, uh, certificate, certification, whatever. And so there's a lot of focus put on, how do you, how do we get students there? And this, um, Foster hired a bunch of, I guess three or four, kind of college and career counselors, graduation specialists, all that. And within, um, I think three or four years, the graduation rate was up over eighty percent. And so, you know, that was, you know, it worked, it worked. And if we start on pulling that stuff out, you know, I just totally fear that it's gonna collapse. I mean, I know it's been said that, well, it's everybody's responsibility to, you know, get, um, good students ready for college and so forth. And that's true, but we have to recommend, I, this, it's interesting, the state doesn't keep this number, but I suspect if we looked, our Foster High School would probably be pretty high. The number of students who are coming from a family that has not been to college before, I mean, our number would be probably pretty high. And when you think about what that involves in terms of educating, you know, students and families about all the intricacies and I know going to college has gotten a heck of a lot more complicated than when I went to college and working through all that process and, you know, as mentioned, this year, FASO was a mess because they, the federal government messed it up. And so, you know, people could have just been dropped on the floor really easily without that kind of support. And so, you know, we need, our students need that extra support. I mean, there's just no, no question in my mind and it has worked for, for many, many years, uh, to get us, uh, where we are today. So I think, um, that's another one where we need to absolutely figure out. And, you know, the other, the students were commenting, as I heard, and I've been in the College and Career Counselor Room, um, you know, a number of times over the years myself. And when you walk in there, always there's students around talking to each other, working on projects. You know, it's, it absolutely is a, a hub and, you know, it was when we did the remodel on this building, that was kind of one of the key things that we wanted to make sure there was a room. I was actually, we were kind of lobbying, I wanted it overseeing the commons so that every student could look up in the commons and see. Just to remind them, we didn't quite get it over there, but anyway, it was close. Um, so, um, that, you know, the, the nature of that room and what's in there is just, um, I think is, is key to the, you know, this, well, a lot of the success of this, of this, um, of, of this high school. So that's another one where we need to, you know, absolutely figure out how to, um, That's another one where we need to, you know, absolutely figure out how to um, keep that, keep that going. So. Um, let's see. What I'll say on those subjects, that the other thing that I'm um, I'm working on. Uh, for the, this is kind of the longer term to, you know, get more funding from the state um. To fight our regressive funding system. And I was at an all-day summit put on by the Equity and Education Coalition. That's a. An organization in, in uh, out of South King County, and actually they've gone kind of supervised at this point. That's working on this um, how to change the state funding system to be progressive and actually based on student need and put a lot more money into. Into schools like, uh, like ours, uh, to um, provide great, an equal opportunity for our students. And so. Anyway, they had a great summit. There's a lot of this, there's a lot of. One of the challenges of getting these things through the legislature is there's just aren't very many people that understand. The education funding system is so. Uh, freaking complicated. It just turns everybody off kind of immediately. And so. This was about starting to educate a wider scope. There was a lot of other um, community organizations there getting up to speed on this. And so. It's been a very good, uh, I think it's a very good effort. We need to kind of get as many groups as possible so that when the legislature meets again in, in the next uh. Uh, January, we'll have some, some good pressure points on them to, to kind of increase this. There was an interesting um, article in the Seattle Times that's been publishing some editorials on this. There was an article in the Times on, on Monday on the front page about this funding schools in general. There's, I always. There's two issues that are going on in our funding system. One is, is what I call ampleness, that is, which how much everybody needs. And. The big, one of the big topics there is inflation is just eating school districts alive. And the legislature is not stepping up to fund that. So that's one day. And everybody can kind of agree on that because we're all getting it equally. The other one is the big one that I'd like to spend more time on is, is the equity side. In other words, pushing a lot more dollars into the. Schools that have um, a lot more um, needs for, you know, whether it's uh. You know, poverty rate or M L L students, asylum seekers, whatever it is, all those things that we have in, in abundance. We need a lot more uh, money into there. So anyway, um, those efforts are going on. I'm gonna keep working on that all summer. I've got a bunch of other. Uh, things I wanna do. And so hopefully by next um, legislative session, we'll have a good uh, coalition of folks to go. Um, go after the legislature and, and start some progress on, on changing the funding system in that way. Um. Oh, that's it. So Dr. Pedrosa brought up an issue she wanted me to comment on, and that was one of the things that the legislature passed. Uh, last session was something called the Parents Build Rights. Which it was, it started as a um, initiative and the um. You know, you have to kind of look behind, this is one of those things that. When you just look at a top level and superficial look at it, you say parents build rights. Well, of course, parents should have, you know, we love our parents and we want them involved and so forth and so forth. But when you look at the groups that are kind of pushing this, it's, it's in reaction to some legislation that said things like, we want. You know, uh, all the racial groups included in our curriculum. We want L G B T Q uh, students, uh, folks included in our curriculum. So this is kinda, this is basically, when you look at it, it's a reaction to try and squash those and, you know, override it. And so it's, it's, it's gonna be a tricky one. The legislature. Uh, first of all, there's, there's tons of parents' rights already. There's a whole booklet actually here. This was written before the initiative came out. All the parents write, the term parents have plenty of rights already in the system. And this, what this new initiative does is it just made it kind of. A little easier to complain more, you know, to, and potentially uh, school districts will have to respond quicker. To requests for, you know, tell us about, give me every detail about what you're using your curriculum for. I mean. Or this is a, is a tack, to some degrees an attack on teachers. That, you know, we wanna know everything you're telling, you know, student every day in classrooms. And that just, it has a potential to just um, tie up school districts and nots if we have to kind of respond to all these things and. But the response time for these went down to ten days. And so there's, this is a lot of kind of under the surface stuff. And. The legislature um, decided that it was better to um. When the legislature is presenting with an initiative, they have two choices. One is they can pass it, or two, they can just. Uh, not pass it, in which case it will go to the ballot. Now, if it goes to the ballot and passes, then the, then the legislature cannot touch it for two years. If the legislature passes it, then they can modify it the next year. And so, yeah, this is kind of a strategic plan on the. The legislature to say, okay, we think this is one of those issues that, like I say, on a superficial level, that, uh, you know. A voter may look at that, parents' rights. Well, of course, yeah, we should say yes, parents' rights. But they won't go underneath, you know, to analyze it. So it's, it was a strategic move of our legislature saying, okay, let's pass it ourselves. That way. We can come back next year and, you know, make some modifications to it on ourselves. And so. There's gonna be, Dr. Lewis was talking, there's lots of discussions going on in all the districts around about. Um, okay, what we need to, this is gonna be a little tricky because the potential lawsuits involved in this if we don't respond and. But I think in actual, well, you know, um, what's gonna happen is I think the legislature is gonna take input and then. Modify it next year. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tricky year, but uh, anyway. So I think that's kind of what you wanna, I, Dr. Pedrosa just wanted me to kind of make everybody aware of this and. That there may be, I know some of our staff, it's both are kind of.
We're already working on it.
Getting, getting a little, uh, unfortunately, having you spend too much time working on this as opposed to other things that should be working on. But. Anyway, just, that's, that was just for awareness. Um, and I mean. Yeah, that's what I have. Thanks.
How can you report it this time?
Um, it's been a crazy month, um, but there's just two big things that I'll, I'll touch on. Um, so we had that staff repertory event. Um, last week, which was really lovely, great turnout of folks. Thank you, Foster, for hosting. Um, and you know, in the two-year, two and a half years that I've been on board, I've attended is my third one. Um, and it was pretty scaled back event compared to years past. And um, I actually think it was really amazing. Um, and I think it kind of, that's like a. Uh, an example of like how things can be scaled back, but just as meaningful. Um, and it's not necessarily about like what we do, but like how we make space um, and hold the space. Um, and so it was a really, really lovely. Um, event. So thanks for everyone who attended. Um, thanks to um, the uh, Nutrition Services Team for providing wonderful. Um, those weren't even appetizers, like that was a meal. Um, so thank you so much uh, for everyone who contributed um, to that event. It was really special. Um, and then um, I had the opportunity to uh, come to Foster and visit um, two periods uh, in civics class and. Um, is a little bit kind of impromptu, had some interesting scheduling things, but I showed up um, and uh, got to sit in front of. Well, thirty, forty students and um, just answer questions. And it was, I mean, every time I get in front of. The scholars here, I'm just, you know, a little bit awestruck at just the thoughtfulness, um, I think in the um, uh. Yeah, uh, the, the amazing questions that they had. And I think they're really, their willingness to listen also. Um, and one of the things I was, you know, really intentional about saying is like, I wanna make sure that you feel heard in my responses. And. Uh, if I don't answer your question, like, push me on it and ask me again, or ask me a different way, or just say, hey, that wasn't a good enough answer. And. Um, just again, their willingness to, to be in space together and um, ask really important questions. Um, that were difficult to answer, but I think really important. And I think it gave me some insight into. Um, you know, all these decisions that we're making as a district around, um, you know, reductions in force. Um, have a significant impact on them, right? Not just what it might mean for their, you know, academic success in the future, all the things we've heard, but. Just right, their feelings, right here, right now, how it impacts them today, um, their relationships they have. So many of folks were thinking about like, and said, like, I don't care about me, but I'm thinking about the people who come next, right? So this also really amazing. Um, just ability to think outside of themselves, right? And I can think again, that also um, speaks to the, just. The, the environment of belonging that you're creating, because again, they're thinking about other people that aren't even here yet. They're thinking about the young people that are in grade. Right? We're gonna be here in a few years. Um, and that was just really amazing. So kind of out, as a response to that. Um, I wanted to make sure that we had a little bit more of a formal time uh, to hear from anyone who might be willing to. Should we set up? Uh, another listening session, that was open to the whole school. We had a few folks that came, um, and the folks that did come, um. Had just the willingness to be so vulnerable, um, was just incredible. Um, and so I'm, I'm super grateful for their um. Um, them showing up to the teachers that showed up, on the staff that showed up to um, ask their own questions. And again, I think. Um, you know, as we're navigating all of this, I think the best thing that we can do is just making sure that we are. Holding space the best that we can, right, to tend to the things that are coming up for everyone, um, as we're navigating these continuously challenging time.
Perfect. So I guess mine goes into, you know, I was, um, you know. Got an email from Highline Community College and they, because of the position getting dropped here and changed, that they're not gonna have a point of contact. So my. Thinking about that is where, where are we going with that, you know, for, forward would be my question. I'm, I can email and. You know, talk to you more about that in the, in the future about that. And then also I agree with Dr. Larson. I think the. College and career part, we have to find a way to protect that. Um, and have someone focusing on that. So I'd love to talk more about that also, um, for it. So. Uh, nothing more to report other than that was just what I got from talking with you on over there.
Yeah, the point of con, well, I can explain in the email later when we talk about notifications, but uh, the point of contact on the district level would be the. Director of K twelve education from the district side. So. Yeah, we're talking about the student side.
Well, you never know what the new guy is gonna talk about in the first meeting, uh, that I wrote in notes. One, I did attend on Sunday, the Lightning Thief uh, performance. It was phenomenal. I think there's nineteen uh, songs that they sing throughout this musical. That's huge. And I'm gonna tell you why. I think my opinion matters is that I'm, I'm actually a professional state and. Part-time after-work, after-board meetings and everything else. So I've worked in every theater in this region, uh, on the east side of the state as well. Um, it was really, really well done. And you're absolutely right. And these guys were stretched to the max, but it looks like. They handled it really, really well. The lighting was amazing, starting with the spotlights out into the audience in the very beginning. All the way to, um, you know, just where you couldn't have big major features. They had things on sticks. All of a sudden, you knew what was going on. I totally taxed my Greek mythology knowledge because I haven't read the books. Uh, as I went through this and it was really, really educational. It's fun to watch them. They look like they're having a great time, which is what, what matters. The music program that was below them, I actually didn't know. I thought it was being played. Through a C V or something. And then I realized we have a live group down there. And that's, I, I speak highly when I'm saying that because I'm really into music. Um, so uh, it makes me think, uh, you know. There's ways to go for legislators and grants and other things, but it might be time and I'll need a lot of guidance because I know there needs to be uh, care taken on. My seek, but it might be time for us to seek corporate funding and just get, uh, you know, whatever's within the law. Um, for schools. It just might be time to, we don't have a performing arts center. In all of Ticoles. That's it. That's our place. And it just seems like communities do it all over the country. Right down to little farm communities. And it just seems like we should be able to stir up. Uh, corporate interest in advancing the arts. And I agree with you about talking to King County and others as well, uh, Orterra, all of those. But it just feels like, you know, without having all the walls covered with advertising plaques, it just seems like we should be able to figure out a way. To, um, help, you know, I'm just gonna own it. We're a low-income community and we deserve people to help us. Get to the same levels that everybody fundamentally assumes that they can have. So that's the first, first thought. So, okay, um, I got a call today. I'll take it offline with you, uh, Dr. Pedrosa.
Okay.
But um, it was from the woman who runs uh, the Happy Zone up here, Early Learning. She is really into this program called Working Connections Childcare. Wherever you go through them, get certifications, you actually get paid to do childcare. She's trying to work with the community center. With lukewarm interest, but I wonder if that will apply to us at the school as well. I'm just all, all about if we don't have the money through property taxes and the proper channels, so why don't we find other ways? So. Love to talk with Seymour and connect you too. Uh, she is very enthusiastic.
Sad pleasure.
Yes, your neighbor. She's amazing. Um, teacher appreciation. Uh, I was. Long way enjoyed being amongst you. Uh, couldn't believe how many amazing people are reaching pinnacles in their careers for, with so many years, but. The devotion doesn't surprise me at all. Um, the welcoming, uh, way that people just let me sit down anywhere. I got, I kind of hung out with the transportation folks. But it was immediately made, uh, people feel like, okay, yeah, you're new, but sit down, we'll, we'll take you under our wing. Um, maybe we did scale back. I got a couple of comments that maybe a couple of things were missing that we might wanna try to restore. Again, we need to go, you know, either a board or something, uh, and reach out into our community and see if businesses and stuff can. And maybe restore some of the, you know, gifts and uh, you know, I think it's a raffle, but I don't know how, how retarded it gets. Uh, but that would renew some of the interest in the fund backing with the folks. Um, uh, commencement, somebody's gonna tell me if we're supposed to, I'm gonna attend. Well, I don't know if I'm supposed to show up in a gown with my wordboard and my hood, or if it's just show up in a suit. No, okay.
I put it, I put it in one of the updates.
Okay.
In the purple, but I'll send it again.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm still getting through my emails.
That's okay. I'll send it again. Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um. It is not really directly related, but it's related. The football coach went outside to an organization I also belong to, so it's Consey, um, to uh. To ask for funding to help kids uh, and get some uh, nursery going. The reason our. Uh, they're, they're up early and I think they stopped those practices lately, but six-thirty in the morning is when they tend to meet. Uh, and they're hungry, right? And they're athletes and they're burning. Uh, so they were asking if we could help out. Uh, one group could help out, which was a little low on funding themselves. Um, and someone spotted a grant coming through like Seahawks and Safeway, a whole bunch of stuff. I make this comment to say I am very impressed with the superintendent at staff. Uh, and the coaches and the athletic director who quickly, I mean, what was a turnaround, less than a week.
Yeah.
Uh, made out applications for this grant. And I, I'm so sure that they qualify. And it had to be done through the school and we had to be at. Seventy percent, pretty much.
Yeah, seventy, it's about seventy-five percent, something like that.
Yeah, so we, we are like, they've, they've arrived for exactly what they want. So I hope that'll come through in big ways. And that may be just more things that we need to think about in terms of sports, because I also believe in sports as well as the arts. Talked too long. Thanks for your patience. I'll try to keep it down in the future.
All right, um, I just wanna kind of. Name one or two things, um, you know, I'm, I'm definitely an advocate for like figuring out how we can get more funding, right, grant funding. Um, I, I agree that like, I mean, there are probably so many folks out there. Corporations, individual donors who believe in the arts, um, who believe in some of these other things. I think the challenge that we run into as a district is that we are a small team, right? And so there's still someone that has to uh, go out and search for those. Folks and then do all of the applications and then the reporting that comes with a grant. Um, and so I say that to say, Lord, what might we be able to do to support the team? To lift some of that off. Maybe it's we're going and finding, right, identifying what those grant opportunities might be, who those people might be, and then. Passing them off to someone. Um, but I think, you know, we have to remember that we are a small, mighty. But small team, um, and in a small district like this, folks wear multiple hats. And I think that's going to become even more true. Over the next two years. And so we have to figure out how to get creative and be supportive as a board. To ensure that as we're, as we're saying, go find more money, go find more money. We're actually supporting in that because we do not have a person. That is here, that is their full-time job is managing, finding and managing and supporting grants. Um, so just wanted to kind of remind folks that we do have some limitations just based on our sheer size. Um, and the folks that are already working so hard um, to even get our, you know. Get our budget in a working place, right? And then, and then, so we've got a lot of work to do. And I think there's maybe ways that we can support that a little bit.
Just a quick uh, comment on top of grants and little grants. Donations.
Right.
Which means advertising and sponsorship. And so I, I'm mindful of what Dr. Pedrosa said before, which is. We have to be careful, like, who we sell our soul to, because they will manipulate us in the culture we wanna have and anything else. So I just wanna say, and I, I don't say this loosely, it has to be people that have the same. So I just want to say, I'm not, I don't say this loosely. It has to be people that have the same set of values as us. That are trying to put fuel into the tank, not take it out. Thanks.
Okay. Um, that brings us now to the approval of our consent agenda. Make the motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is our board discussion, uh, which is the superintendent contract. Um, so just to kind of, uh. We'll set the stage here a little bit. So we, um, appointed Dr. Pedrosa as our superintendent, um, at a meeting, I think, two weeks ago. Um, and, um, now it's just kind of the fine tuning of the contract itself, um, contracts, uh, that typically runs for a three-year term. Um, and then, um, with a potential to, to, to extend, continue extending. Um, and so, uh, this is the conversation before the board approves the, um, uh. The superintendent contract. So what the plan was is just to have a little bit of over discussion if there were any big. Concerns that folks had questions that folks needed to get answered, um, and then we'll take some time between now and our meeting in June. Uh, that's correct, right? Now we're meeting in June, um, to make any of those, um, updates. And then we will vote on the contracts at the, uh, that, that regular meeting in June. Um, so with that, um, hopefully we all had the chance to look over it. Um, are there any kind of initial questions, thoughts, concerns, um, that folks have?
So I guess just the other thing to say about us, it's, it's basically the same contract that was in place. There's no, no addition other than. You know, what everybody gets, which is the IPD. I should, that's it. So.
I did. So that the, um, that was actually my one question. For most part, the tracking of the changes were, uh. Document track changes, my words are not working, sorry. Um, except for on the salary. Is that because the salary wasn't changed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this just includes the IPD.
So, okay. Okay. Um, and then I also just want to, um. Appreciate whoever changed the language from gendered language to non-gendered language. Thank you. Thank you. Um, simple yet meaningful things we can do to ensure inclusion and belonging. Um, so thank you for that. Very lively discussion. Well, um, if something does come up, uh, definitely, uh, reach out to, uh, me. Uh, between now and our June meeting, um, so that we have the time to, to change, make any changes or edits that we might need to do. Um, before we improve that in June. And we will need to improve that, approve that in June. So if you have concerns, please let me know before then. Okay. Um, all right. That brings us to our questions only presentations. Um, so as a reminder for folks, uh, the board gets opportunity to ask written questions. Um, prior to the board meeting, those questions then get answered in written format. Um, so, uh. Uh, if it seems like we're not always asking a lot of additional questions at these meetings, that's because we often get many of those questions answered. Um, and then this is just additional time to follow up on anything, um. New or as it related to those questions. So with that, monthly financials. How are you?
Good. Amy Fleming, the CFO. How are you?
Well, any initial or additional questions? Here. I just, can you just remind me why the headcount would be higher than the actual enrollment?
So the headcount, uh, so there's two types of enrollment, just headcount. And then there's, um, average annual FTE. So if a student's been absent for over twenty days. Um, you can't count them in our offering enrollment counts. That impacts your headcount. You also have high school students that are considered, some are considered part-time because they do want to start. Or sometimes they do full-time want to start. Um, you have some students that might be homeschooled, but they come into, um, school for maybe the PE or an art. Or some sort of music course. Um, and so they're only partially counted, although they're. Their, um, bottoms in the seat, so to say. Um, they make that headcount a little bit higher. So there's the difference. The state funds us on average annual FTE, um, not on headcount.
So we don't get money for those students, like that example at our homeschool, but that come for these.
Right. You only get a portion of their FTE for that small amount of time that they're in the building. So, yeah.
It's, it's just kind of astonishing. So the answer to my question about how many new students are McKenna Vento, like sixty. Three percent of the new student, new six, twelve grade students enrolled since, uh, October qualified for McKenna Vento. I mean, that's just, um, I mean, I mean, it's consistent with what we, I think, what we think. We know that that's, that's an incredible number considering that. Our typical overall for the district, McKenna Vento is like ten percent usually. So anyway, but we know why that's happening.
Right. Well, close to twenty percent now.
Yeah, it's just something to, uh, keep in mind.
Thank you. Well, next is the financial forecast.
So I noticed now we have for a couple of, um. Months in a row, the. Current projected ending fund balance has been going down, which is a good thing. And. I assume, and I think that has the question before, and it's, it's because of the increase in number of students because we're getting. An increased proportion of revenue.
Yeah. So a little bit is related to apportionments. Um. Uh, the latest impact was, uh, we saw some increases again because of MKV, uh, special ed. For it. Um, and so that we are seeing a little bit of apportioning adjustments related to those factors. Um, we also had some title, um, additional funding come to us through our title programs.
It's also based on number of students.
Well, a little bit, but, uh, it was additional funding that they found that I think was above the, uh, initial allocation. And so we've been about to provision for that pretty quickly and, uh, we're awarded those funding as well. Um, and so those were. Those were the two biggest areas for some increases that we saw on the revenue side.
Yeah, the previous month, I think it's four hundred thousand, this month it's like, uh. Yeah, a couple hundred thousand. I guess, so one of the things when I, I don't know if that's going to continue for the next two months or not, but. When we're, when we're looking at, you know, the original, uh, cuts that were made, we're assuming. You know, a worse situation. And I know it's going to be a balance point. I mean, we get some new revenues coming in. I mean, we, we want to get out of the financial hole we're in as quickly as possible. However. If there's opportunities to, uh, hold on to some things like the college and career, it's like the theater teacher. I think that they're going to support, you know, relationship and some things that we hold dear to our students. You know, we need to be looking at that as a potential source of, you know, uh, funding. So I just. Point that out. I don't know. Do you have any sense? I mean, are we going to see buying some more, another couple hundred thousand next month? Or do you have any sense of that?
Uh, well, I do know that we were notified on Friday that we did receive some array of funding. We do not know the dollar amount yet. So it could be anywhere from twenty-five thousand to two hundred and fifteen. I know that there were.
That's a pretty big spread, yeah.
There is, but it depended on the number of districts that applied. I, when I was on a phone call, there were seven other districts in that phone call besides Staculla. That are also in need of funding due to asylum seekers, students in their districts as well. So I, we will be notified, I believe, uh, if not this week, next week on what our funding for this cut here. Um, will be. Um, and again, the maximum was two fifty, the minimum was twenty thousand. So. Um, that's the range. I have no information until they, they give us the award letter. So.
That was the two hundred and fifty, which I think the bill is two hundred and fifty thousand this year for all sides and seven hundred and fifteen next year.
Right.
Which it would have been nice if they.
Yes.
Could I don't tell all of that and just kind of ask, um, all the seven schools, we have the lion's, lion's share aside the students. And so, so the second question to that is. Are people who are relocated like the C-TAC benefiting? Uh, by saying that they have a side that's a C-TAC now, another student works school year.
Right. So I, I think there's, I think it's not just us. I mean, we have a Ukrainian population coming in that are getting certain parts of the region. Um, we don't see that here in Tukulla, but other districts are seeing Ukrainians. Um, and so of course, a lot of the districts were in San Diego. We had Seattle highlighting us. Um, but then there were districts that weren't close to us at all that also, uh, joined in that hall, um. Because of those same situations. So, yeah. It's for the whole state, for the whole state. It could be anywhere.
I think like myself, um, Representative Berg was hopeful that within, uh, a lot of it, well, because he sees what's going on, right? Cause he might, might not be aware of what's happening.
Here's the other question and I. It was a little bit complicated. I may take this offline, but, um. I'm wondering the fact that we're getting a significant increase in enrollment, how that impacts our ability to accept local levy dollars? Because local levy dollars, you indicate that it's tied to valuation, but not really because it's the lesser of. And we always, we have huge, if we were able to get, you know, the two fifty per thousand donation, we would, you know. We would be not in this problem, but we're limited. We've always been limited by the number of students. So it's like three thousand dollars for students. So the question is. The tricky part is when you go through those four-year levies, you have to kind of guess four years in advance. What, uh, enrollment, you know, might be. So I, I don't know if we've. It's, it's kind of, it's a bit too, well, you can't do anything about it anyway. I'm just curious if we're being, if we're being bumped. Down because, I mean, uh, four years ago when that last levy passed, I mean, there was some assumptions. And whether we're deceiving those assumptions now that we're going up so fast, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand for that.
Okay.
Point yet.
Okay.
Uh. Something I'll be looking into very, very shortly though is, uh, assessed valuations are coming out. Yes, you ran some numbers and I was a little bit surprised with the number that they came out with. They're, they're showing a big roll back for us as, as always. Um, and so I had a meeting with them next week and that was one of the things I was going to discuss with them to. Figure out what they were, how they were calculating and what they determined in that calculation. So.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other, um.
So I know we get the additional portions in April for the, in April and then. June?
Oh, lovely, uh, probably in tax portions. Is that what you're asking?
No, sorry. I feel like the, the, so we set our attendance numbers in October. So for the, the apportionment for the additional students that we have. Um, April is the other month that we get those.
In October.
October. Oh, yeah, in October. So basically in April, so that's reflected here. We got the money for all of those students that had been, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any additional questions here? Okay. And then next is the budget and staffing update. Who's had additional questions?
I guess is, uh, is there anything? You're going down the path and we have a pretty good prescription and direction here. Is there anything more you need from us and are the values that we set for them, that aren't as we set forth? Are they adequate? Or what the processes are?
We're doing a lot of HR and labor relations here for the school district. Thank you for that question. I think the. I think what is important is, um. Some pieces that are not shared here is just when, just when meeting with the staff members, just remembering, um. You know, the, the situation that they're experiencing and how, you know, we're looking at. You know, presenting resources, but obviously that's, you know, secondary to, um, what's happening right now for the individuals. And so. I think. That if we have other solutions that, um, we would definitely be exploring those. But I think this is a plan that includes, uh. You know, our, just our very best effort at stabilizing the staffing.
Thank you.
So I just, I just thought of my other question, uh, to the fact that the finance thing that. So the OSPI made a ruling on binding conditions. I understand that if you're borrowing. Uh, we could get out of binding conditions, my understanding is, which doesn't. And we're still in a financially perilous situation, but has, have you checked into that?
So I did not receive a response, but I think that the intent of the law was for anybody that was going into binding conditions. Next year, um, that this temporary, uh, law was passed in order to help districts. And I will be very blunt. It was to help Seattle School District, um, avoid binding conditions for the, for the next two years.
Okay.
Um, and so, um.
It doesn't apply to us.
It doesn't apply to us because we ended up here in, uh, and then negative end of balance.
So it's going to apply to us next year.
Well, potentially, I, I would say we're already in the binding.
Yeah, right.
Already under the terms of the binding conditions. So I think that we're within it for the two years, just because.
Oh, I just, and I don't know whether being in binding conditions, whether that's. The additional workload on you versus being out of binding conditions, but still, I mean, still being in a financially perilous situation. I don't know, but okay.
Yeah. I mean, the, the additional workload for me is just taking the extra step and sending the documentation over to them and then meeting with the EST on a monthly basis, which. Actually is a benefit in a lot of ways. So it's, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry.
Doesn't work. Um, and try to decide it. This is going to get mutual to say, but I think I just. You know, kind of. I wonder, I know, so and I also know that there's like, that's a thing where I think about bargaining, talk about bargaining. So I just wanted to be mindful of that, but. You know, as we're all experiencing what is happening in our district right now. Um, I think it just makes me wonder. What real opportunities this is going to create to really look and examine. The language that's in our collective bargaining agreements, um. To make sure that there's good, like real alignment with our values as a district. Um, cause I think, you know, again, a lot of the decisions that are being made around. Who, um, really is outlined as a result of the bargaining, that bargaining agreement. And so I guess it just, um. I just wondered what this means in our ability to really come together, um, and think differently perhaps, um, about. Those collective arguments. So, I don't know. That's all I'm about to say. I know we're engaging in a different way of bargaining this year. Um, and so I just, I hope that this has been some good information for everyone to think about what that looks like to really come to the table. In a way that is going to be really thoughtful and caring about all of the individuals that are here. Any additional questions? Thank you. All right. Next is our early learning reports. Additional questions to folks have?
So the, um. The Voices of Tomorrow program, do we, um, does the school district, it provides space? You said. The school district does not fund them, but they provide space, which is in-kind funding.
So we provide space at a, we pay for the space, but we do straight.
Okay.
Um, based on the type of organization they are.
Okay.
So they do pay for their space, but it's not like a market rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gradualational statements. So I guess this has been the case for a while, but. So the chief constraint for this district in terms of. So the chief constraint for this district in terms of offering more early, early learning slots of any kind is space.
Yeah, cause you have to have the right kind of space.
Yeah, very particular kind of space, right, so. And, yeah, we continue to have, there is a waiting list. I assume this, this chart, to qualify for recap, it's what, fifty percent of. Uh, state beating income that the.
Yeah, and there's, so income remember is one piece and then there's. Other types of factors that can come into play, because when a family applies, their applications are given. Points based on different components, income is obviously if they won, but if they have other things, like maybe if they're homeless or other pieces.
Okay.
All those things kind of come into play. So it's not just one cutoff level.
I think it's still generally true, this, this community. Definitely needs more early learning opportunities, whether they're provided by the school district or other, other people. Which I've been kind of lobbying the city for a while to consider. Maybe opening a, a space in the, that's one of the old, uh, fire stations that's sitting down there. I mean, cause we could, we have the potential to apply to run the program if we have the space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, in the meantime, this is obviously not a replacement necessarily for a, an early learning start program. Um, but thinking about all of the, um, family, home, child cares. Um, or other, like, early, early learning environments that are here in the city of Tackulla. Um, even if there's an opportunity to promote those or, you know, um. Some way let families know that those are even available, um, because there are actually spots open, I've been calling, uh, for my own kiddo. So, um, uh, which is often pretty rare, and we think about like childcare really hard to find, and it certainly is. Um, and at the same time, there's some opportunities there, um, so maybe there's a way that we can kind of help bridge that gap. Um, and make some of those connections for families that might be on the wait lists, um, or looking for care other ways.
Cause I think there's even a, the way that this is for people that probably qualify under the income, there's probably another set of, of folks that are above the income level. But would love to have some affordable, affordable daycare as well, so.
One thing I'll add, for recap specifically, we can and have petition for families who are over income to participate. And so one of our school sites has four students who are in the over income category. Just get in, run our app, they didn't have enough students in their catchment area and qualified by income, but they have other families who are over. And so for recap specifically, that is something that we have, I have found. Us to be successful with, with the P S D in terms of if we have space. And the kid, the next kid on the list is already coming, able to bring that soon in, and so we maintain our funding. So that's there, there's flexibility there.
It has a preschool program, it opened up a position of preschool teacher for the summer, cause she is leaving at the end of June, or at the end of May, I can't remember. Um, I don't know how they're doing in the hiring process there.
Okay, any other questions here? All right, next is the winter weather incident. I was just, you might have some questions on this one. Uh, questions, comments?
I guess my, the, the one question that. And so the, the report on this. What do you stand for? Is something engineer?
Yes.
I did look in the. By the E engineering.
Anyway, it was, it was kind of a little disappointing that the report said, well, we don't really know why the, the administration building. Broke, um, I mean, that's a few ideas and, but. What I was probably more interested in is the, okay, so going forward, what are the, you know, what can we do to hopefully make sure that this? Doesn't happen, and there was. It's certainly in the administration building, there were several comments about when. You know, people first appeared on the scene that we didn't know where shut off sound door, which. Probably made it worse than it would have been if you'd been able to like shut off a lot, so quicker than possible, so. Assume that's, that's all been addressed.
Addressed, correct.
Addressed, and then. The other one that I was, that I was interested in is over the preparation prior to an anticipated cold weather event, which we know another one's going to come. Staff will ensure heating systems are programmed appropriately. Um, my question always on this was, and you say, okay, so our, our control systems. You know, cause these things tend to happen when nobody's in the building or the, during vacations and so forth, where. Okay, this, the system gets turned down.
Right.
But the question, if we know that a cold unit is company, why don't we crank it up?
Well, the system's also on the way to an occupied mall with normal sixty-five to seventy, sixty-eight to seventy-two degrees, now you're going higher now. Um, and the problems that we had is that these were events that happen in attic spaces where the heat usually don't go. Administration building, they only access to that, they're only allowed through the HR. And we have just one entry point to that area, so that's also another suggestion that he has to create a second entry point. To the, to the pipes above that attic.
Or I'll even put a. Like, if the attic area is not getting heat, put a heat pipe.
I see that couple of our recommendations about that director, since Sunday explained last time to their great ideas. Uh, I'm going to be looking into those possibilities, uh, during this, this summer before that one comes.
So this came up when we were looking at a report at the end of last year, um, and talking about, I believe, the wet dry system in Cascade View. And, um, thinking about, you know, some of the questions that we had is knowing that it costs X amount of money to replace. And, but every time it breaks, it costs, you know, seventy thousand, hundred thousand. Um, and, you know, I think one of the questions that we posed is, how long are we going to keep fixing? Putting Band-Aids on this problem before we actually just spend the money, uh, because at some point, like if we. Fix it ten times, now we've spent a million dollars, when that's what it would cost to fix, and I'm just throwing out numbers, those are probably accurate, but. Um, so I guess what's our plan to really do some cost, can I finish real quick? Thank you, that's okay, what's our plan to do some more cost analysis to say, this is costing, this is going to cost us more money over time? And I know it's kind of a hard discussion to have, knowing that we are at a budget crisis right now, but at the same time, if we're gonna spend. The same amount of money over time, plus then have to replace it, so we'll spend double the money, money versus just kind of. You know, finish doing it now, um, so kind of how are you assessing that? Um, and I think it, you know, relates to all the things that happened in this incident as well.
Right, so, um, when I did my presentation in December, we were talking about a dry system. Uh, uh, Cascade View Elementary, this incident happened in, um, in January, did not, did not hit. That dry system I just gave you, so it was a different system that heated this night. Right, so we have two things, I did present to, uh, the office, um, to the chief at that time, the cost related to. What's what cost to replace the system, at that time, it was, um, around one million dollars for that. Now, what we have been seeing, uh. And now we have a new chief, so she's going to give a direction on how we can handle, at that time, the, uh, the financial chief. And then the, the financial chief mentioned to me, okay, so we spent a million dollars right now, but in four years, we're going to be replacing. That, Cascade View as, my understanding is the board is planning to replace Cascade View in two thousand twenty-eight, we go for a bond. So the cost to replace yearly price, prior cost to replace a million donors now, so. That time, the, uh, financial chief stated me, stated to me, let's hold it down, let's just put Band-Aids. And you're saying at this moment until we can replace Cascade View, because we had to replace that building and. My understanding is that it's for two thousand twenty-eight, if the plans changes. If we're not replacing Cascade View, then we have to act and do something about it, and then I will receive guidance from. Financial, national chief here, thank you, that's helpful to you.
So, the, the board, we really, I've been asked through this for a while, but this twenty twenty-eight, I, we've never seen that, I've never seen that number. I mean, we need a long-term, a long-term facilities plan, and, you know, the problem with. Uh, of course, now, you know, our bond rating is in the toilet, and it will be for several years, and so. The question, you know, the other part of that is, you know, twenty twenty-eight, that's only about three, four years away, um, I mean. Yeah, we need to do really a serious analysis of that, is that a realistic number, given how many years is it going to get our. Bond rating and what's the cost and, you know, all that kind of stuff, uh, before. So, I mean, I guess I'm just advocating to just do a serious analysis of it, because we should absolutely do that. And then we, then we know what the, or, I mean, those things can always change, but at least we'll have, you know, the.
We sure have actual numbers.
Yeah.
But again. Short, long-term plan is to redo the whole building, putting X million dollars in the building, we don't tear it down, it's not. Could use some money, but it's also spending. Seven hundred thousand every other winter, it's a waste of money, so. We need to figure. Figure out how, cause like more and less actually. And that might be as simple, as simple as figuring out in the meantime, how to put some. Heating and ventilation or the, or the insulation changing so that the attic and the non-drying system. Gets added to heat in the winter. That might be a couple of. Tens of thousands of dollars, but that'll hold you. To. To the decision or the, or the, we're in a position to. Recalibrate the decision of when that whole building is going to be done, so fifty, sixty thousand saves you seven hundred thousand. So you're not wasting X millions to tear it down and put a whole new system in, that, that is not wise, even if it makes sense now. Put in a three million dollar sprinkler system and then tear the building down. And don't be calling this, uh, negligent again in the meat, that wouldn't make sense.
And it gets, it gets even a little bit more complicated with Cascade View, because, you know, there's. There's a whole issue, issue of ventilation and air quality up there, um, that's right under the AC airport. There's all kinds of grants that are available to get, you know, schools under heat in, where, and I was looking at the Climate Commitment Act, um. There's actually, we're in a zone, we're all, you know, um. Burned area, I think they call it, so it's, it's, it's all, we're in a, it's a whole zone of South, South Seattle and us. You know, low-income areas that are getting dumped with all kinds of toxic, you know, primarily, you know, fine. Article air, so it, it, it gets a little more complicated, because I, you know, we want our kids to have good air quality as quickly as possible. Yet, so all this, all these factors need to be, but you need to do the analysis.
So you know the, so we, we all know the actual numbers of what's the cost.
Right.
Ratio, uh. What, what, what's wise to do now, that's wise to wait later, uh, not doing anything, it's not. That, that's not the answer.
And keeping in mind the health of our students.
Most definitely.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, um, also for your diligence through this whole, through. Everything that happened with all of the buildings, I know that that was a lot to happen all at once, um, and, um, so just thank you, the team, for your work. And helping getting our building, um, back up and running. Thank you.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
And I will say, uh, I didn't say to my report, I did get to walk through the building to see. What was damaged, where it came from, how it looked, what was repaired, how it impacted everything, so. Yeah, I, I got a chance to see this. Thank you for the work, but we, again. We got to figure out how not to be in that situation.
All right, um, that is all of our questions only presentations, um, so now is for the actual presentation this evening. Um, with our department, uh, transportation department update. I'm Susie Kelly, Director of Transportation. And I'm honored to serve this district. My father, my uncle, my auntie, all of our, I went here from foster high school. Yep, neither with over anymore town. So. I don't know. How much you know about transportation? It's a little silo all in itself, that really does can affect education dollars if we're not careful. So I would start with just giving you a little bit of information, the beginning of this year, we started with eleven drivers. Two part-time drivers. One assistant dispatcher, and one of, one of those drivers also got their driver training certificate this time. Which was really fantastic, so we can now teach and certify new drivers. So we're excited about that opportunity, for him. At the end of the year, we did lose one driver. It worked out okay because the numbers kept changing on buses and we were okay to lose that driver temporarily. Uh, we now have ten, two part-time, we have a transportation coordinator, which, a little bit of background. Um, I have actually, since February of twenty twenty-three to August, I've worked two jobs. I did all the routing and I did the director's job. So we finally found a qualified candidate to come in and help with the routing and take over, and it has been a seamless effort. I'm very pleased for that person, that individual.
And as all that, as all the influx institute, particularly the McKinney Mento students, I assume that's increased the workload.
Hi, my, I know I have gray hair, but I was turning white. It was, it has severely increased our workload, but we're fine, we, we can do this, we've got this. Where, where we will make it successful, um, our basic routes, so that you know, there are seven. Yeah, seven, uh, six with the Foster Showalter combos and one that goes to B S S D. Three buses at Tuck, two buses at Thorndyke, two buses at Cascade View, our special needs, oh, side note. Um, this year, our basic buses are serving on average about one thousand and seventy-four students. Last year. They were only serving about nine hundred and thirty-eight, so we are seeing an increase more and more and more each month. Special needs really jumped, uh, we have one bus at Foster, Showalter, Thorndyke and Tuck. Last year, they, this average serving was thirty-three, this year, it's at seventy-seven. So they came out of the woodwork this year. Um, it was quite delightful, and, and we are also learning to do more with less. So some of the ways that we can, transportation can work on saving education dollars is we serve all of our field trips. With yellow buses, we try not to charter, that's a very expensive cost that we try to save. So, and how do we do that? We work with our coaches, we work with the athletic staff, they are amazing. That helping us do a number of different things, whether it's sliding fifteen minutes here, fifteen minutes there, combining, we might put two, two. Sorry, two, um, teams, I couldn't get the word teams in my brain, two teams on the same bus, we'll drop them off. And then we'll swoop in later and pick them up, there's a lot of cost savings that transportation can do in that arena. Let's see, what else do I have here? We staff to and from school appropriately, our elementary buses hold seventy-seven to eighty-four students per bus. We're averaging right now in just about the eighty-two. People, persons, little people per bus. High school, middle school is a little different average, uh, we start at fifty-two, we can work up to sixty-five, yeah, on average, sometimes we can get a few more in there. We're running pretty high on those max loads as well, uh, which is good, the more kids we put on buses, the more efficient we are. And the better funded we are. Uh, we continue to use, uh, offer vans for like athletics and things of that nature to help diffuse some of the cost of charter buses. Uh, we also in our routing efforts, uh, we might, we offer Orca to many of our out of district students or even close by students. Uh, we always map out the, their bus route to make sure it's sufficient for them. Um, and Orca is free for everyone, for all students, which is lovely. Cause, uh, the next option that we use, and we do it in a hierarchy every time, all the time, bus, Orca, in lieu. In lieu just means we're paying parents mileage. Yes, the per diem, per mile. We have, it is cheaper to do that than per se a car service that might be seventy-five dollars per trip.
Paying a parent to take their kid to school?
Yes, there are conditions.
Missed that.
Yes, McKinney Vento. Yeah.
So out of districts, but going, so they're residing in another district. Attending to Tuck Wilson's because this was their home school. And it, we find it's cheaper to pay parents mileage.
Not all, yeah, not all can.
Not all can.
But those that wish to, it is, it, 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 and we can't, if we can't get a bus to them based on distance or whatever, we will pay in. Is that just making even to students or any student that lives out for the district?
To McKinney Vento. Okay.
Because I think as a district, we're under law, any, any students more than a mile away are required to buy transportation. Or, or less.
You're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and then lastly, of course, is the, the, uh, car service. We, the, then, um, company we're currently using is Everdriven. Um, they're a very solid service, um, and they help us a lot with our billing practices. When we share a student with another district, they do the billing for us and that's less we have to do. Um, and we find that they're very accurate and very thorough. Um, the question that you had asked me, Deb, next page. The question was, due to the current financial crisis and stabilization planning, how do we commit to the same or higher level of service to students in schools? And I just, I simply answered that by the previous uh, slide that, that I just stepped through that process with you, the hierarchy of choosing what services we're going to to provide or can provide. Um, and then I give an example of the, of the higher piece, and that is, um, each of our members gets two hours to serve each route that they do inside of that timeframe without going, without exceeding it. If there's, and if there's room on the bus. Um, last year and this year, uh, we offered seats to our intramural students needing, uh, to hitch a ride to T C C. And that really boosted the attendance for the intramural program, but it didn't cost us anything. So there's our higher. And I hope we can continue with our buses as full. We do have a contingency plan. Our coaches will come to the school and sit with those students until we get back, because our runs are really short. We can rush out, drop them all off, get back, swoop them down to T C C and still be within our confines of two hours. So we make, again, we do more of the plans. Let me ask a quick question, please. Actually about a bullet on the last one, uh, around the Orca card. Yeah, when appropriate. My assumption is that there's an age that we wouldn't go below, right? We're not putting a kindergarten or on a public bus or? We do not know. Our, our, our rule of thumb is middle and high. And then there's a lot of varying factors and reasons why or why not. And we consider all of them. Yeah. What you're looking at is our depreciation schedule. Tuck Wilson School District owns twenty buses. The lifespan of most average big buses, all average, are all big buses, thirteen years. There are also eight-year buses that are small buses that we do not own any of. All our buses are thirteen years. So they get paid to our T V F fund monies each year for the ownership of it to then replace it at the end of, of its life cycle. So what what happened before I got here was, um, a, a decision to purchase or take out a loan and purchase ten very large buses. So now our T V F fund is paying the loan on those buses and not actually able to purchase at the end of a bus lifecycle. And they would have ten that come up at the same time. It will happen twenty thirty. I've already mapped it out, but I have a plan. And I've already been able to, by stacking state and federal grants, we have purchased six buses outside of the funds that we actually have and include maybe, maybe including a little bit of funds that we did have to input, but very, very nominal. So we have six propane buses, alternative fuel buses that we've been able to get in the time that I've been here since two thousand eighteen. So I'm really proud of that effort. Um, I'm hoping in the very near future that we could look at E V buses um, through grants. Um, we, the actually, I'll move to the next slide. A company called Highland, um, is a company that I engaged with last year and they were they were interested. They were interesting to me because they were going to help us, number one, financially, because we could, we didn't have any monies to spend, but they were willing to help us with that burden. Um, and they were writing all our grants for, for, for nothing. And so it was a great thought, but it hasn't really come to fruition the way I had hoped for. They technically have two more days, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, three, three more days, um, to let me know what the outcome was of their, of grant number two or three. I've lost track right now, two. I'm hopeful that they tell me that we've got something to move forward with our E V um, purchases or endeavors. And otherwise, otherwise I had another conversation with, um, the Department of, or sorry, forgot the name of it. I put it right here. Uh, Puget Sound Clean Air, and they're, they are also a free grant writing service and I'm hopeful that, um, that our next shot at E V buses, um, will either come from one or two, one or the other of these resources.
So how is, if Highland and Highland?
Highland.
Is a company, uh, and everything's for free. How do they make money?
Well, I asked them that too, and they, that's kind of why I'm disenchanted with them right now. I, I I, I, I'm not sure I can actually answer that. There was.
My assumption is that most people that are writing quote, three grants are getting a cut out of the grants somehow. I assume.
I never really could discover that, Dave.
Okay.
I wish I could. I answer that more definitively. Um, I, yeah, I'm sorry that.
You know how, speaking of the other hive line, they have some E V buses. Do you know how they're?
They're sitting, they're not using them.
Oh, really? Well, because?
Uh, they, uh, I'm not sure. I don't know. I think.
Showing them off.
Their terr, their territory over there is unlike ours.
Yeah, they're much more spread out.
They're way more spread out. Our, this district is ripe. We're only seven score miles.
Yeah.
We have very few hills.
Yeah.
So, and our routes are very short and that's really a proponent for E V buses.
Right.
It would work. And also, um, the Department of Ecology, the EPA, they are all, they're all rooting for us. And I really thought that Highland was going to come through for us and so far they haven't. Um, part of that is my own inability, inability to be able to really oversee them more. I really handed it to them and said, you make it happen. And unfortunately, because of the two positions I was working, I was, was hard. I couldn't quite get there, but I'm out from underneath all of that now. I'm open eyes and tunnel vision for the E V effort. So I'm.
I mean, Puget Sound Air, that's a government agency. So, I mean, they're not in there to make money.
They're not. They're absolutely free. They're absolutely free. Yeah. They're just, they're just helping with the grant writing and, and whatever else that they, that they can help us with.
And we thought, as I thought through, so my understanding of these, there's a couple of, there's some infrastructure that needs to be in place. I charge it, you know, uh, in our bus area.
Absolutely.
Charging and also keeping the batteries warm at night.
Yes.
Those kinds of things.
So when I started the conversation with Highland, I also was having conversations with, um, Seattle City Light, and they are all on board. They want to fund us fully to get our infrastructure in place.
Okay.
So I'm excited about that.
Okay.
But that, we're moving away from that conversation further and I'm trying to get back there and say, okay, I'm, I'm put that conversation and say, we're ready.
Okay.
But I've got to get the grants for the buses first. I mean, it's, it's obviously a check and balance of, of all our resources that.
Well, with the Climate Commitment Act coming out of Olympia, I'm understanding there should be a lot of dollars sometime. They're already there.
There are if you're, if you successfully write and apply for it.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, the representative I chose was, may not have been the best one, best choice. So I'm going to plan B swiftly.
Okay.
Let's see, um, what I did forget to mention simply is the goal. I hope that we can find ways at very minimum by purchasing two buses per year. And what that will, will do is knock off a one-year impact to the budget. If we just, you know, a lot of averages, it'll be a little bit less expensive and more manageable, more palatable to just hopefully buy two buses per year as we move forward. That's my, that's my goal. The historic subsidy here, um, I wish we didn't impact at all. Uh, last year, the impact was pretty severe with, uh, the stolen catalytic converters that we had and having to wrap the entire transportation department with a brand new fence that helped eliminate thieves. It's been working. Uh, we haven't had any thefts this year. Um, and then segue to this year, wasn't increasing our subsidy is simply the fact that our M K V transportation is so impactful this year. It has increased a lot. We have tried to put every single one of them that we possibly can on the yellow bus. But there are still ones that we can't reach and don't have the capacity to do, and they all have one ever driven. Um, I, we, we used to have a policy of if they no-showed, no-called three days, which we unfortunately had an impact of a cost involved with that. I narrowed it down to one, if they don't call and they, and they, they have a no-show, I put their transportation on hold, holding them responsible to be our partner to save our monies and it's working. So.
The other question, there we are. So I'm kind of unclear on why we didn't get any transportation safety net dollars because um, my understanding is that bill was kind of made for us because particularly if McKinney Vento is the biggest issue. And, you know, I looked at who got it, you know, we're struggling, it's a hundred thousand dollars and we get nothing, nothing. And, and, and so, you know, I sent a question to T J Kelly, the CFO of OSBI, and he said, well, you guys are eligible, but you didn't fly. So I, I'm still, I mean, there's, there seems to be some disconnect between OSBI and us on that issue to figure that out.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I, I, my, my experience of it was prior to February was none. I had not been involved in that process and I was totally willing to jump in and try. I crunched every number I had, I put it into their form and nothing produced out of their form. And you keep, you don't get to see the formulas. You just put your numbers in and nothing came out. I'm like, I must be doing something wrong. And all lady has said, hell.
At my point, there was a, there, I heard there was a speculation that since you run a super efficient operation because of the efficiency, whatever. I mean, that's something we need to know. If, if we were not getting money because we're running a super efficient operation, that's a problem. We need to go scream and yell at those.
It could be true. That is, that could be part of the answer.
Okay.
The other piece is, um, or something I want to share is, um, a, a light district to ours, but it's way up north. And then that, that is Anacortes. They go through a tremendous amount of documentation. Um, I have all of their spreadsheets. Um, I have some examples. Um, I know that I can sit with the people that have worked on those and, and filled those out. So I, I feel better going into it next year uh, in the month of January. We, but, um, I left out the fact that there's two opportunities. There's January and May. There, there's January for transportation alone, or there's combined special ed with transportation in May. And so which is better? I don't know that answer.
I'm, I would assume since for us, we have this high percentage of McKinney Vento.
Yeah.
If you want to get that part of it. And, and of course, it's like a pretty good, they got two hundred and eighty-five thousand last year. So
Anacortes.
We do what they did. Yeah.
I have their formula. I've got every one of them. So I knew that was my reading.
I think it still would be good to have a conversation. I don't know if it's T J Kelly or, or somebody underneath him, but they're good. Really make sure, I mean, why we didn't get it.
Yeah.
I mean, understand really well why we didn't get it.
Yeah.
Cause I still don't, I still.
Well, I called him the day that I couldn't make the, 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 that form work.
Yeah.
Said, I have tried.
Yeah.
I have, you know, our CFO, I've crunched every number I know.
Yeah.
And it's not working.
Yeah.
And I said, I, I'm sorry. I, I just don't know that I can submit anything. There's nothing there to put up.
Okay. Yeah, he left out that part.
Yeah. And, and a lot of ways it has been a little bit of a blessing because we can't double dip.
Yeah.
So we, when we apply for safety net funding for special ed, transportation was included in that application. If we do hit funding for some of the transportation costs, that was showing up in transportation, the transfer.
Okay. Okay.
For the Orion funding because of the number of, um, asylum-seeking children being transported through Everdriven.
Yep.
Uh, I use those calculations in my application to Orion. So it'll be just a determination of what the funding amount will be for us. Um, and some of those will get transferred over to the grants as well if that is the case. So in some ways it was a blessing in disguise that we didn't get this, the transportation safety net because we wouldn't have been able to use those funds to acquire for the grants. These other grants that we've been applying for.
Okay.
So yes.
They're like, sounds loaded, but.
But, uh, I do want to.
I just want to know if, if we're getting screwed out of some money.
Right.
Something, then we need to go tell them something.
I've only done it one time.
Yeah.
I felt like my, I felt like I had filled everything out the way they'd asked and it came out nothing.
Yeah. And so, I still would like to understand why.
Me too.
Okay.
All right. Um, slide. Are you at? Try eight. Nine. Let's go, keep going. Okay. So. I flipped it over. Sorry, I got ahead of you. Okay. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for letting me move this presentation from two weeks ago to this. I was right smack in the middle of Star's funding, which is our, is how, uh, transportation is funded and Washington State Patrol inspections on all of our buses. So all of that and this happened all in the same week. Yeah. So it was crazy, but thank you very much for your grace in letting me move this. But here we are, um, Stars, um, which is, uh, our funding report, it, it basically just counts heads on buses. And as, and the more kids we get on the bus, the better our efficiency is and, and the more funding that we receive. And so you can see over time, the numbers, the bottom, it starts at nineteen, year nineteen twenty, that's down to the bottom and works all the way up. The farthest right column, we, we used to run it about the thirteen, one thousand three hundred and forties. And after COVID, it obviously changed. We weren't transporting kids. We were transporting equipment and food and, uh, homework and whatnot, but it had been climbing. Uh, we're up to an average of one thousand one hundred and fifty-one now. So I'm very proud of these numbers. They're increasing significantly.
It's a good question. I used to look at a house where I could choose to walk the school.
Yeah.
Or take the bus.
Yeah.
Do the kids know that they can be helping our bus, bus funding, that they have that choice and take the bus?
So there's a fine line if you have to promote that.
Okay.
We used to have a fun the bus day back in the old days and we would, we could skew our numbers and only count from that week.
Well, I don't mean cheat that way. I mean,
Yeah.
if I, if I knew.
I would be.
As a kid, I would take the bus.
I'd be really careful with that.
Sure.
I like, I like how you're thinking.
Okay.
But, but, yeah. Can the, can the board do that as well?
Can the, can the board do that as well?
Yeah, ride the bus. Just, just remember right now, we're at eighty-two for our elementaries, so, so let's. Go yet. They don't let us have articulated buses yet. Um, but we're working on hiring at least two more drivers. We'd like to put one more bus over at Cascade View. Cause they seem to be stretching the most right now. Um, and yeah, we'll see how that goes. Uh, this is our efficiency rating, uh, is a hundred percent. I'm proud to tell you, um, I came into the district one that was much, much lower. We were in jeopardy. And pulled us out of gutter in the first year and we've done one hundred ever since. So I'm very happy with that. Um, any questions on that piece?
Can't beat a hundred percent.
Can't beat a hundred percent. This is another reflection of our allocation and it just basically tells you a little bit of interesting information. Our average distance travel for each route is two miles. Destinations are the moneymakers right now. OSPI used to give us their funding formula on a spreadsheet and we could manipulate it to learn where our sweet spot was. They now hide it.
They don't. They're on to you, I think, yeah.
They learned quick. Yeah, that was years ago. So now, we know that destinations give us more funding, so we find ways. To go to different schools. If, uh, if Highland calls and says, I have a child, no K D child living in your district going to. Uh, one of the elementaries over here, yep, I'll take it. And that's a desti- destination. The more destinations we get, have, the, the more funded we are. Um, and the same with, uh, the same is true for special needs students. They're weighted heavier heavily than a basic ed student. So there's a little bit more in the funding for them. Just a little. I don't know the exact formula because I can't see it anymore, but I know it to be true. Um, our funding went up. Our allocation went up, uh, from last year, which I'm really pleased for, because there's more heads on buses. Celebrating our, uh, celebrating the successes. So the destinations, as I said. Um, continue to increase, adding, uh, to a stronger allocation. Student ridership, uh, is continuing to slowly increase along with our student enrollment. Uh, daily student counts provide the means. To route more efficiently, routing by maximizing our riders on buses. I do wish to add two or three electric buses. Uh, hopefully this time next year or the following. And again, no major, no major thefts this year. Some of the challenges that we do continue, uh, to address is the expenditures over the last two years have increased. It's hard to get around that. Everything costs more these days. Um. Prices of bus maintenance have gone up. We were able to, able to mitigate that. Uh, we found a vendor that is also our, where we buy our buses from, and they were able to provide us a better hourly rate. Um, we had a vendor coming in one day a week to check our fluids on our buses. And we found that we could. We could hire one of our own. Drivers, pay them five days a week and still net savings of two or three hundred dollars a week. So. We find little ways to make it work. Um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five. Years, um, planning, the budget impacts are MKV students that go out of district. There are many of them. Sports are also, oh, sorry, to mitigate that, we're going to route as many students as possible on yellow buses. Uh, sports are an impact, but again, we're going to flex our times to offer yellow buses. Another impact is cost of services for our vendors. Oh, I just gave you that example. Sorry. Uh, budget impact is purchasing buses, so to mitigate that, we're going to find grants or rebates in order to purchase our buses. And supplement that. Uh, budget impact is special needs, out of district transportation. I'd like to also work on finding a budget for vans. Um. As we train new drivers, we can be putting them in vans to drive because they don't need to have the certification that a bus driver does. Um, and they can drive those students to and from, whether it be MKV. To, or, or to our out of district special needs schools. But I like to find ways to. To put them in vans as well. Um, another budget impact is our current state routing formula, which does underfund. Uh, Director Larson mentioned that earlier, so we're always looking for, for ways to fund a delta, so we'll have to motivate that legislature.
They, they keep saying they're gonna fix it and then they keep saying the next year.
I have been in this industry now for thirty years and it's the same story. It's not fixed yet.
And I try to focus them on at least, give us what it actually costs to do the McKenney Bento students and basically that.
Yeah.
And I think they're gonna do something like, look at last year's numbers and then do this, you know, it's some type of two year, three year average.
Yeah.
That's a question for you. How many vans do we currently have?
Two.
Two. And how many ideally would you like?
Oh, oh, that's a good question. It would have to suit the needs, so I'm not sure I could fully answer that right now.
Are the two, two meaning the name?
Not. Yes, because we haven't actually been. We've been reserving them for sports. They use them more and our teachers. So we didn't want to impact them because they get to go on field trips because we have a van, or they get to serve sports because we have a van. So we're not there yet. I would say ideally maybe two more to be hopeful and then run those and see how we do and just grow it incrementally. Yeah.
Another question about daily student counts. Um, if you've got a person that rides in the morning, but maybe they get picked up by their parent in the afternoon on any given day, how do you calculate that? Does it count as a ride?
That's a great question. Yes, we count, we count both morning and afternoon. Uh, uh, every bus every day. So we get that, we get that average. Yeah, we don't miss a single thing. Um, the last question was the department raise inequity goals. Um, it's not always easy to apply that to transportation. But then again, it is. Uh, we're gonna follow the district policy. To provide a diverse interview team. We've had some fun with that because in the past it hasn't been. So now we're involving some of our, um, diverse team members. Um, our drivers who have not been involved in that before, and so we're finding ways to involve them. Let's, I like it. Continue to hire drivers. Uh, or sorry, diverse team members. Uh, recognizing that communities. Uh, most affected by diesel exhaust pollution should be the first to benefit from electric school buses. And Tuculpa is certainly affected with pollution. Uh, focus on car-centered culture that may exacerbate disparities by removing these barriers. And what I mean by that, the example is. If we have MKV students who we take out of district and. There's, um. Typically, the parent has to show a parent card and the, and the child has the, the student card. Rather than simply telling that parent, I'm sorry, you don't have that card, which we've done in the past. It's been our policy and we've done it for years. We take that student back to school, that they don't have that identification that I'm the parent, I'm taking that child. We're loosening that up, we're removing that barrier because that in. Most of the time, they don't have a car to go collect their child, or we end up kind of bringing them back and then. We're impacting staff at school, we're impacting that parent because now they've got to find them, maybe a public bus to go get their, collect their child. So we're being more mindful. Think the others speak for themselves. The equitable funding, ensuring equitable funding for school bus services is, is crucial. Um, districts should allocate resources based on student needs. Considering factors like demographics, distance in school and socioeconomic, socioeconomic status. That is how we make our determinations. Thank you for your time.
Overnight, literally, Shanderson module expert now. On AI and transportation.
Yeah.
For schools. Why? Because sixty minutes is a small story. Thing called TransFinder.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if that's expensive or not. But what it does is it takes their known routes and the number of people and the locations.
Yeah.
And it helps you with those routes.
Yeah.
The schools that they talk to were small.
Yeah.
And the, I'm not trying to replace a human.
No.
But they did. Uh, do what you're trying to do with your brains. Uh, figure out cost effective ways to. Get their routes go.
Yeah.
So I know and you know, apps cost money.
Yep.
But if you do me a favor, just look into it.
Um, I would be happy. We already own, uh, Traversa. Oh, well, yes, so let me, when I joined, when I joined, uh, Tuckler, we were routing off of Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
By hand, human person, it was archaic. So we quickly invested in the most low cost app that I could find that did automate ninety percent of it. You can never take away that human piece because as I shared with my, uh, router slash transportation coordinator today. She had a route planned in front of her that I clearly saw. The bus can't fly over this overpass. Turn around and go back under it and pick up a kid. So please, human quality control. We have, we have to be that quality control because we're only as good as what goes in with them.
It was a tool, not a solution to those.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just, it was an interesting idea. It's not like you've got a good app. I'm happy with that.
I appreciate. One thing, yeah.
They were saving money, so.
That was the one thing, um, when we were going through all of the shifts with the asylum seekers and. And then, uh, there was lack of tracking in other places. I'm gonna say, McKenney Bento staff and the transportation staff had all of our students trapped. And it was that information that we could share with the city and those folks, and so they had their tracking system in place. It was. Typical, the school district that was tracking the kids, so I just want to say that. That's a huge piece because sometimes. That wasn't happening in other places, so thank you very much. Thank you.
The honor of mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate.
And let's circle back.
Um, yeah.
So. When I heard you say that. Figure for, in eventual. It's a card that the student would have. And the parent for the pickup. Would have to match.
So diving deeper in that, I try, yeah. So what we do is our preschool and our kindergartners.
Yes.
We tag all of, all of them on the back, uh, with a pa- a tag and it, it has information on it. The parent has to show at the bus stop, that's that matching card. We distribute those at the beginning of every year and throughout the whole school year.
And I appreciate. What you share.
Yes.
Compassionate mo- modification and, uh, you.
Yes.
But my question is. If it is for safety.
Yeah.
And the one time. It doesn't work. Would be the one time.
I know, let me.
It'll be too late.
Let me put, let me put that at to rest.
And I felt you, but then I like.
Let me help you. We originally do it all by the book.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so a driver gets to know their kid.
Okay.
So ten times down the road. I forgot it.
They had their card last week.
Well, we used to just say, you forgot it, you don't get them.
Yeah.
Go back to school.
Which is the same we would do if the parents going to take their kid up from school or a regular bus drop off, we're not checking.
Right.
Sure, their parents there probably.
Yeah, for this. If, if the driver doesn't know the parent, we're not.
So that's what I can say.
Thank you for asking. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's, it's every day for me, so I probably glossed over it, or you, so thank you for clarifying.
And do you mind repeating the slogan you gave me at the Teachers Appreciation Day? Um, about the transportation department supports or you have a cute little line. You should be proud of it. Do you remember it?
No.
Oh, darn it. You said a couple of them. That's what's killing. Something about we, you know, I can't remember. It had something to do with supporting education for all students or something like that. I'll, I'll, we'll catch up later.
I'm, I'm sorry that I can't draw.
It's okay. Add the app below on that. So then we'll copyright it.
Put it on t-shirts.
That, you know, when I, when I do remember it at three AM when I'm.
You will.
I will email you, by the way.
It was a department bragging point. It was really pretty cool.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we've got a few items and then, uh, we went to public comment. Um, so the first is the adoption of the middle school science curriculum. So. If you give a motion here.
So.
Any questions, comments?
My question relates to the. Kind of the investigation I put here now, since there's a good evidence, uh, or not, I don't, I don't see. Evidence that there is a whole lot. Of race inequity toolkit applied to this. Cause I know, I mean. We've had data in the past that said. You know, there were certain racial groups that were not. You know, being as successful in science as others, particularly I've never, you know, at Foster. And so, I'm just interested, you know, are we doing a deeper dive into that? That's why I kind of ask for the. You know, what are the grades look like, you know, by race and are there some inequities going on in there?
So when the. Materials were first selected, that's, I'm going back to that part. Because as part of the philosophy statement that was drafted and all of those things were considered at that point. Um. The. Adoption timeline was pretty short, um, so we turned out a lot of work to lift this up in a short period of time. Um, because we're trying to utilize our extra funds to support this is, um. We did not ask them at the back end to like review the student responses by race. I think it's pretty amazing that almost all the kids in the whole school took the survey, um. And the grades, but just like with the math pilot, when the, if this is approved, when the professional development and the training comes in. And your racist teaching practices will be part of what the expectation is for how it is implemented. With students, but the primary drivers for the need for the adoption were the fact that we don't have materials that are even aligned to standards.
Right, I understand that part.
Yeah.
The question is. You know, there's, it gets that old question of, do you see yourself in the curriculum and, and example of, you know, role modeling and are there. You know, and, and the material, are there, you know, black scientists and, I mean, do they, is it, you know?
That's all part of the, the breaks that are used when the teachers are looking at the materials. Uh, is represent, it's not the only part, but representation is a component of which materials get selected to move ahead to be piloted.
Okay.
Um, and then you can pass the control that's what it looks like.
First, and I'm, I'm curious, uh, which of the, uh, documents are you looking at when you ask?
The one that we were provided. Memo.
Is that our evaluation of what we saw?
Part of it, it's a summary of those.
So it sounds like there was some, some other material that was done previous to.
Right, so it's, our process was to take an overview of five different curricula.
Okay.
We narrowed it down to two, lab aids and amplified. And when you really look at those curricula, so much of it is like either online or just like handouts. And they show you pictures of the science. They don't necessarily show you lots of people.
Right.
And so, I mean, the names might be something that you would think of as someone of a different. Non-white ethnic background.
Right.
Um. They can be quite creative in doing stuff like that, but we, you know, you don't really see that a lot.
Okay.
In the curriculum. I, I found, when we struggled with that when we first adopted. The second edition of lab aids, that we, you just didn't see a lot of that in the curriculum. They tried to do it, but.
So that's something that kind of gets to my point. If, if all of the printed curriculum available is kind of. Tone deaf on cultural, you know, then, you know, maybe that says. I mean, I, I guess our only choice at that point is supplementary materials and things like that. I don't know.
Well. The science materials are less focused on any representation of people.
Okay.
It's not necessarily that there's a lot of people representation and there are certain people that aren't included. It's more the. The representations are of like the. Actions or the science happening, so it's a. It's a little different of a mismatch than say the social studies or language arts curriculum, where the people are more focused and the processes.
And most of the curriculum are pretty. And most of the curriculum are pretty good about identifying where a concept originated. So like in algebra, you'd know that it came from the Middle East or that China had a lot of um, innovations early on. That may not have been identified before. So I, I find that most of the curriculum. Does a pretty good job of that, of not just saying anything came from Europe, that they think it a little deeper.
Okay, cause I know, I mean, the foster science is you do a kind of intentional effort to pull in. Different uh, cultural backgrounds of science where science originated from and.
Yeah, I think they do a lot better job of that.
Okay. Who?
Um, most of the curriculum we look at that they, they really look a little deeper.
Okay.
Into finding out like where concepts actually originated.
Right. Okay.
Um, and I, and we found that we think that lab aids really kind of does the best job of getting materials in kids' kids' hands. And the diversity I'm looking for is kids in my classroom doing stuff. So.
I do appreciate also that you looked at the. What the other, what our neighboring districts are doing because I know, I mean, we have, because we have some much mobility going on between. So to the extent that we can, yeah, stay in context, student coming in is not gonna be totally lost because maybe they're in the similar. I mean, you may go through it at a different sequence or something, but at least there's. I don't know.
Seattle does amplify and we thought amplify was the least rigorous of all the ones we.
Oh, okay.
So we, we were not impressed at all with what students were walking away with.
Okay. So, yeah.
Yeah. Should be there in the, I'm looking at uh, what page is this? Oh, page four. Um, where it lists out all the questions that were asked of students and there are three that I think kind of speak to at least to some degree. Um, like do young people see themselves in the curriculum? Um, so one is number eleven where there's examples of activities in the textbook, things that you're familiar with, right? So if they would connect to current or previous knowledge, um, were you able to connect the content that's text which personal experience, right? And um, like the responses that were pretty high. Um, and then uh, did you have opportunities to make connection? Wait, did you use your previous learning and prior knowledge to make connections? Wait, that wasn't it. There was a quick one. Seventeen.
Do you do?
Yeah. Oh, anyway, those two I think speak to at least a little bit of like the students being able to connect with the curriculum to some degree. Um, I am curious about like. Kind of the weighted, that kind of how you'll weighted the, obviously the staff responses to the curriculum. You know, because really, we look at the students, technically all of them rated amplify a little bit higher, right? Um, so just kind of walk me through a little bit of that, kind of how you're weighted.
It was easier.
Ah, I see. Okay. Okay. But that's interesting though, because we hear so much from students that they want the rigor, right? So if there feels, it seems to be kind of a.
Um, they got one unit, they only got one unit of each curricula. And so any new way of doing something. The first time through is gonna be harder maybe than the second or the third in terms of like learning how to manipulate the. Yeah. The, the materials or resources. Um, so that part of things, they did only get one unit in each. And so it's, nobody had an opportunity to do something a second time to like. To develop maybe a deeper, a deeper nuance about feedback, right?
And they amplified when we did weather. I can only speak to the seventh grade because that's what I taught. We spent three weeks teaching children how clouds are made and that's all we did. And they, if they didn't make that connection by the end of them, that's probably because they were asleep.
So students like amplify?
They, they, they were, it was a little higher.
The teachers liked loving.
We, um, yeah.
I mean, they were really close.
They're very close. And I think that they, they took a lot more away from when they did the lab aids.
Okay.
Jets.
Ooh, they did like an online textbook though.
They also liked the hardcover textbook. I had a lot of kids who asked specifically for a. They wanted the textbook's advertisement and they would utilize it. It depended on the kids that needed um, to translate. Or um, if they want read to them, both of the curriculum would do that. Um. Lab aids had about three times more languages, still twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Not all the ones we need. Um, but they would, they would, they'd listen to it and some of our kids really did that. So they just. And then the glossaries were really good and it would tell the kids what words meant. The science is the second language. So.
In case you use any of the Google translation.
Yes, Bing's a little bit better. But yeah, we use them all the time in class.
Okay.
Kind of have to.
Yeah.
So.
Any additional questions, please? Okay, uh, all in favor of approving a science curriculum? Right?
Hi.
Yeah, we had a motion second and that was our discussion about it. Uh, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, all right. Next is the um, approval of out of state bill trip for college course on this twenty-second through twenty-fourth. Any discussion questions? Okay, all in favor of approval? All right, it is approved. Uh. Yep, uh, so uh, just really quickly before public comment, um, I just wanna make sure that I forgot one name for the retirees. That's Donna Witwowski. So I just wanted to make sure I honored Donna Witwowski is, sorry about that. All right. So this brings us to our uh, final opportunity to public comment. So if you're joining us online, we'd love to offer anything. You could do so by raising your hand or typing your name in the chat. Uh, we have three in-person uh, public comments. The first is Jessica Hoffman.
Um, so. Hi, so my name's Jessica. Um, I guess my comment stems from um, the talks of um, possibly cutting the. Some art programs and then just like um, struggling to find funding for these programs in general. Um. And then you said that, that um, there's not really anyone in particular to like help find these grants or process them. Um. Do you have, have a plan in place or will you have a plan in place to find somebody to do that? Like that'll actually be, you know, interested in, in getting these things um, funded. Um. Cause like, I know, I know it is a huge task to take on. I kind of find these grants and get in the process. Um. But that is why we're all here, right? To help our students succeed, our scholar succeed. Like that's the big thing. Um. Like I, I do hope it'll be a priority for you because there has already been cuts to certain staff. That have tirelessly worked with student in social and emotional health. For instance, uh, Mary Rusk at the Bull Elementary will be, this is her last year. Um, and she was a very important person to students, parents and staff, and she'll, she'll be extremely missed. Um, my worry is that if this, um, were they able to get cut, what's to say that trying to find these grants will even be given a second thought? Because that, that's a pretty big job that she had and she's gone. So. Um, I know it's a poor priority to ensure the emotional and so will, you know, the student population in and out of the classroom. And I do hope that's the case. So I do hope that you're able to get these grants at least, you know, top of it. Um.
I wonder, just. Kind of stipulating here, I wonder what there might be opportunities to work with the PTAs. Um, uh, to help support that effort again, kind of like the call to the board of figuring out how we can increase our efforts around that. Maybe there might be support, some support we can get from parents. Um, I know you've been doing one heck of a job. Um, getting some resources for Tackula, Tackula. Um, also maybe that's an opportunity for us to work together on that. Thank you. Um, all right.
Could I just add one more thought to the, the grant comment? Uh, the city of Tackula didn't have grant lighter forever and ever. And finally became overwhelming how many federal funds were being cut, especially for transo- transportation. We got one and that person paid themselves off in thirty months and got hired away. So they got another one. But I, I do wanna suggest that these people are worth their weight in gold if you. And see a way to contract somebody in to do it. Um, it might be worth a try.
All right, next is uh.
Uh, I just sketched all this while I was sitting there. So if there's any um, mistakes, I apologize. But good evening, Superintendent Petrosa and School Board. My name is Kyla Crawford. Uh, I'm the librarian at Thorndike Elementary and building race and equity lead. Um, I'm also the mother of two Tackula school district graduates, Kate and Jane Crawford. Uh, who are both doing well in college and career, uh, both of whom were positively impacted by Mrs. Pachamba who's not here anymore. Um, had to leave and the College and Career Center uh, here at Boston. Uh, I sit here pondering the irony that we are gathered in the library. While we have uh, received notice that our elementary library programs are being eliminated. Um, I continue to ponder the irony of proclaiming to be an anti-racist district while all teachers. Currently teaching library classes at the elementary level are all people of color. Libraries are places where. Students go to learn to love books. And uh, libraries are where my children learn to love reading. And researching. The excitement of students coming to the library, getting to choose their own books is unparalleled. Um, sometimes the students are even more excited than going to PE. The library has long been a safe haven for students. Every year I've gotten a flood of students asking if they can come have lunch in the library with me. I posted restorative circles and healing circles with students in the library who have conflicts to resolve and harms to repair. This year, I've had such huge successes with fourth grade students being leaders in the library during kindergarten and first grade classes. That I've been trying to plan for more formal library system programs. I've also had high school students interested in becoming librarians and come to help out in the library after they leave foster. Um, for the day, they'll come to Thorndike and help out the library and ask about becoming a librarian. In the library, we also teach technology skills and digital citizenship as well as research and informational skills. The library classes are a place where students get to learn how to ask questions and learn how to seek information from the world around them. And have space to apply that knowledge in real time through their accessibility to books and technology. The library is also a place where. We teach combating cyberbullying, which has been an issue. Um, and students have. In times where I've taught cyberbullying classes, I've seen students respond in real time, like shut down TikTok accounts. And realize they have to be fourteen in order to be, to get Facebook accounts, that kind of thing. Um, so we are doing our students a grave disservice if we do not seek creative solutions to avoid dismantling elementary library programs. And minimizing secondary library programs. In addition to teaching classes, being a, and being a safe space for students and hosting student lunches. And uh, operating informal library training programs for students. At multiple levels, uh, we often provide sub- substitute coverage in classrooms. So it would be one less substitute in the building, uh, which saves the district money. Uh, additionally, we posted, I host every year, uh, scholastic book fairs. Which raise proceeds for teachers and student supplies and also facilitate the page ahead book up summer program. Which provides twelve free books to kindergarten through second grade students. At a cost that has been covered through the PTA or other non-district uh, direct funding sources. And that starts tomorrow at Thorndike. Um, as we continue to keep our comprehensive school improvement and reading scores and student safety in mind. Uh, it is, now is not the time to eliminate library programs, especially without discussing with stakeholders that are able to contribute creative solutions. For example, in our building, we have a schedule that may enable us to keep all our library functioning, fully functioning. And potentially save the district money in the process. Additionally, I have questions around how to keep classroom teachers planning time covered without completely overloading specialist teacher classes. Especially with our projected class sizes. I also wonder what would happen to the library collections and supplies, space availability. Accessibility. To say the least, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that we are not centering students in the decision to end library programs. I'm concerned what will happen to student access to high interest reading material, tech and research skills and safe spaces. I'm concerned that students in anti-racism and reading are not highly, are not highly considered in the decision-making round library programs. As a teacher, as a mother, uh, a former district students, as a former Tackula community resident myself. I respectfully requests the reconsideration of discontinue, discontinuing elementary libraries.
Um, hi, uh, Brandon Eastman.
Yo, my name's Brandon Eastman. I'm a parent of a Tackula elementary student. And actually, this is kind of awkward because they talked about both of the things that I was gonna talk about. So. Um, but I really wanted to point out, like, hearing uh, Director Larson and Director Kohler really coming up with creative. Ideas for how to save some of these important things and do those things. That's basically, I don't have any. Solutions at all. You, I mean, you guys are the ones that have kind of more a grasp on the situation. But as far as my focus being on at the elementary school with Mary Rusk and the social, social emotional stuff that's going on. I feel like that's, I have no clue what the solution is to help upon that stuff. But getting creative is gonna be the theme for the next couple of years and really thinking way outside the box. I mean, and the corporate sponsorship I thought was a really good thing to start looking at and just throwing ideas against the wall. As far as what's gonna be solutions. So. I kind of just really wanted to say, I really liked hearing that as a parent of like really looking for these other ideas. And the same thing with the library, like as far as like. The library not just being where you go check out a book to go read, but all the technology stuff that goes on there at all the different levels. And losing that is also. Gonna be difficult. And I know like you were talking about with the PTA stuff. They do fundraising things with the scholastic book fair and stuff like that and hope some, finding some ways of doing fundraising to. I don't know how you bridge that gap between the school district funds and fund it, you know, doing all that stuff. But that's what gonna be kind of. That has to be part of the solution for the next couple of years. So that's basically kind of what I wanted to say. So, thanks.
Foundation.
That's what we did.
That's right. Um.
We do have a camera.
Uh, okay, great. Um. Uh, Katie Hugo. Will be able to unmute in just a moment. Can you hear me?
Just a second.
Okay. My name's Katie Hugo and I'm a teacher at Tackula Elementary. So a few months ago, we were told via email by district admin that they would need to reduce our workforce by fifteen percent. But that the cuts that they were gonna make, we're gonna be the ones furthest impacting our students. So far, since they've started making these cuts, they've cut twenty-nine certificated employees. Twenty-one classified employees and eliminated fourteen certificated positions. And they have until Saturday to continue this elimination. Seventeen certificated employees have appealed their non-renewals and so far the ones that have heard back have all been denied. Meanwhile, central admin only cut two point five positions that directly impact them in their building. As of now, we will have many vacant classrooms going into next year and we were told that the district has no plans to fill them. Please explain to us how the cuts that were made will not impact our students' learning, growth and social emotional well-being. In my building alone at Tackula Elementary, we have five classroom positions that are currently sitting empty for next year. And grade levels that will be starting way over capacity and that's if we have no new enrollment. In my grade level alone, first grade, we have two teachers and sixty-six kindergartners coming into first grade. Meaning the two of us will start with thirty-three kids apiece. How am I supposed to teach a highly capable class with thirty-three students? How are we supporting our students, families and staff? How do you expect to retain the remaining staff you have when this is how we're being treated and this is what their year will look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I just kind of wanna reiterate for the board, to the, the folks. Um, and also to say this out loud, um, that we, uh, it's um. Not our practice to respond directly to public comment. Um, that said, um, I, uh, what we can do uh, is ensure that there is a response. Um, it's important that your questions are. Um, it's important that your questions are answered, that you feel heard. Um, I, uh, so I'll work with Dr. Perjosa to make sure that every single person gets the response that they uh deserve. Um, I I think the one thing I'll just, I will say is please revisit discussions that we've had as a board and documents that are on board docs because they do outline some things that might speak to your questions. Um, yeah. And then if you have something specific, um, again, that you would like to talk about, I am ninety nine percent certain that if you reach out to Dr. Perjosa, she'll sit with you um and have a honest conversation um about whatever your concerns or questions are. Um, there is one document that did come up today um in our board meeting and one of the questions only that I think speak a little bit to what was just addressed in that last public comment. Um, so just wanted to reiterate that. Um, but I do want to just recognize um each of you for speaking. Thank you so much. Um, and just because we don't respond, um, that's more about the practice and the setting um and not not about how much we appreciate um and take into account your thoughts. We all make a lot of notes. Um, I know I bring all of these things up in my meetings with Dr. Perjosa and I know other board members do as well. And I think one of the things we can do is we can send a email to the staff, sort of explaining, answering some of these questions, right? Because uh, I'll just talk about librarians specifically. Um, while it is true that elementary certificating physicians are not there, uh, classified physicians will be there to support some of it. But it doesn't, it doesn't discount. I don't want to say that and do that with every physician, but I will say I don't want to discount the work that individuals are doing, right? Because the work that you do is really important. And so we do recognize that it is a diminished, um, it is a diminished desired effect that we want for all of our students. And so these are really good comments. Um, uh, so it's very clear, some of the mitigations that we need to sit down and sort of describe and work with our principals so that they are really clear on what does this actually look like in practice? And we're actually still in the process as well. So we're still uh, as we're, you described in the memo, there's some still moving parts, right? It's, we're not even done. We're not completely over uh the process yet. In fact, I don't expect us to be done probably, Aaron, what? Yeah, till till the middle of June, maybe, right? And so we're still in the process of moving some of the parts around because we've agreed. So I I would just want to remind everyone, we have an agreement that we made with our union. It's the district made it with the union, the union made it with the district. It is a partnership. We've never had to actually actualize some of the language. We're doing it and we're having a lot of growing pains and it's really, really difficult. And like you said, from the very beginning, so what do we learn from this process? You know, did it work very well? Were there pieces we can get better? Can we strengthen? Those are all the things we have to do. And yes, we also recognize the human element. A lot of people are hurt right now. We get it. And it's been very, very hard for everybody. And that's all I want to say. Very good. All right, um, seeing no other public comments, um, we'll now move to adjournment.
So.
All in favor?
All right.
That's something to sign on. Not that one.